Since we have everyone, let's go ahead and call the Johnson City Council meeting number twenty-one dash zero three to order Cindy roll call please.
Council member.
Here.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ready.
You.
Like to welcome every everyone that is with us this evening Cindy, can you tell if we have a guest?
We have twenty-two people.
My guests. Okay, fantastic. Okay, well, we want to welcome all of you. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask you to wait for that item to come up and and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications, which is coming up here shortly. I did not read the COVID nineteen statement. I can't see the COVID nineteen statement. There we go. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and in accordance with Governor Reynolds, March nineteen twenty twenty proclamations and spending the regulatory provisions of Iowa Code Section twenty-one point eight, or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a public meeting or hearing. The city of Johnson will conduct meetings electronically with a public allowed to attend per instructions denoted on the meeting's particular agenda. Meeting minutes will continue to be posted per the city's normal course of business. Okay, moving back down to the items under three, we have the agenda in front of us. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I had. So sorry. Jim, I don't know if you.
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to mention that there's been a request to take item six H off the non-consent agenda and talk about that separately. Excuse me, off the consent agenda and talk about that separately.
Any other changes? With that change, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I moved Evans.
I second your.
We have a motion, a second Cindy vote, please.
Council member Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to public communications, we have two listed public communications this evening and then we do have some other discussion that the council will have and let me let me just say at this point because we are already further down on the agenda than I had intended to be, but we will be having some conversation under public communications about the recent resignation of one of the council members Scott Seroyka, who tendered his resignation to us on Friday or made it effective on Friday. He he has taken a position with the Biden administration in Washington DC, which has now caused a vacancy on our city council. So we were excited on his new venture adventure. You know, great opportunity for him, great opportunity for Iowa, but that does leave a vacancy now on our city council. So we'll be having some discussion about that. When we move further on here in the public communications, but why don't we dispense with the two listed items first and then we'll have that discussion? The first one being the twenty twenty business survey findings report and Janet, are you gonna?
Yep, so what? Mayor and council tonight, we have Jason Murato with us ETC Institute. In December and in January, we gathered results from the businesses within Johnston. And this is one of the first business surveys we have done in the community. So right now we don't have a trend line. So I will turn it over to Jason and he will present those their survey results.
Alright, thanks Janet. Let me see if I can get the screen here. Okay, thanks, everyone. My name is Jason Murato. I'm with ETC Institute. And ETC is a marketing research firm based in Latha, Kansas. And as Janet said, we just recently for the first time finished administering a business survey for the city of Johnston. So today I'm going to go through with the high level key findings from the survey. So ETC is based in Latha, Kansas, which is in the Kansas City area. And the thing we specialize in is conducting community surveys for local governments. We've been doing this type of work for over thirty-five years. In the last ten years alone, we've conducted surveys in more than nine hundred communities and forty-nine states, including a lot of work in Iowa. So this is really the type of work that we specialize in. This is just a quick rundown of what I'll go through today. I will go over the purpose and methodology of the survey. I've listed here the main topics that I'll go over and then I'll be happy to answer any questions as well. So there's several reasons to conduct a survey like this. One is to get an objective assessment of the quality of city services that are being provided to businesses in Johnston. And then also to identify ways to improve the quality of services that the city is providing to the business community. And then also to help identify issues that have an impact on businesses in the city. So this survey was four pages long. It's a little bit shorter than the community survey that I presented a couple of weeks ago. The survey was administered by a combination of mail, online and phone. Our goal was to get completed surveys from at least seventy-five businesses. And we ended up with eighty completed surveys and the surveys were completed by business owners and senior managers. So first we'll take a look at the characteristics of businesses that completed the survey. We asked businesses what best describes their business, which industry they're in. So you can see we had a wide variety of responses. Fifteen percent were professional scientific and technical services, fifteen percent financial insurance, twelve percent healthcare and social assistance, sixteen percent said other, which included a variety of just different things. We asked how many years your business has been in the city of Johnston? And again, we had a good mix. Fifteen percent have been in the city for five years or less. Thirty-two percent have been in the city for over twenty years and everybody else somewhere in between. We also had a question asking about city services. And this question is similar to one we asked on the community survey. We asked businesses how satisfied they are with different types of city services. And what really stands out here, well, I guess, first of all, the the blue are the positive ratings. The dark blue ratings are very satisfied. The light blue is satisfied. The gray is neutral and we interpret neutral as meeting expectations. It's a rating of a three on a five-point scale. And then the pink and red are those who are dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. So you can see there are very few businesses who are dissatisfied with any of these services. In fact, for every single service, less than fifteen percent were dissatisfied. And in most cases, it's five percent or less. And if you look at the top of the chart, the services that businesses were the most satisfied with were street lighting, police services, stormwater drainage system, street sweeping and and just cleanliness of public areas. Now, the next question to that, we asked which of these services are the most important to your business? So the one rated as the most important was police services, followed by street maintenance, economic development and city planning and development. We had quite a few questions on the survey related to COVID nineteen. We asked, how would you describe your level of concern right now about the COVID nineteen pandemic as it relates to you and your business? And we had a kind of a wide variety of responses. Thirty-one percent of businesses said they're either extremely concerned or very concerned. Twenty-nine percent say they're not very concerned or not concerned at all. And then the number one response was somewhat concerned, thirty-nine percent were somewhat. We asked, how is COVID nineteen impacting your current or future staffing levels? Just over half, fifty-four percent say it has not impacted their staffing levels. Thirty-five percent says had a slight impact and then eleven percent said it's had a significant impact on their staffing. We asked respondents if they furloughed any employees as a result of COVID nineteen, fifteen percent said yes. We asked, how prepared do you think your business is to meet the needs of changing industry as a result of COVID nineteen or similar challenges that may occur in the future? Most businesses say they're either very prepared or prepared, seventy-six percent say that. And that's compared to only three percent who are not prepared. Then we asked, is your business still experiencing distress as a result of COVID nineteen? Fifty percent said yes. We asked, how do you expect your business to evolve as a result of COVID nineteen and twenty twenty-one? So forty-four percent, so almost half say they anticipate their business growing. Only two percent said they plan to lay off employees. Twenty-six percent said other, and if you select the other, you could write any response. So most people who selected others said no, they don't expect any changes in twenty twenty-one. And then twenty-seven percent did not find a response, which we interpret as meaning they're just not sure. We asked, do you anticipate your commercial space needs changing over the next two years as a result of COVID nineteen? Twelve percent you see said yes. And then we'll switch gears and we had a number of questions about the internet, internet access. This person is really a combination of COVID nineteen and internet. We said, has COVID nineteen changed your business internet needs? Twenty-eight percent you see said yes. We asked, how do you use the internet at your business? So you can see there's just all the different reasons people selected. The most frequently mentioned reasons were things you would expect, email, company website, data management, backup or data storage, web surfing, social media. We asked, who is your internet service provider? About half centrally, century link, about half media com. And then we asked businesses how satisfied they are with their current internet service provider. So again, here, the dark blue is very satisfied, white blue is satisfied. The orange is neutral, which again, we interpret as as the three, it's a three out of a five on the set the rate of three in the five-point scale. So meeting expectations. And then the pink and red are dissatisfied and very dissatisfied. So the areas of businesses are the most satisfied with are data allowance, speed. Be looking at this third row down, fifty percent of businesses rate their overall experiences as being very satisfied or satisfied. Twenty-seven percent are dissatisfied with their overall experience. The lower lowest rated areas were related to price and customer service experience. Then we asked, over the past few years, have internet speeds kept up with your business needs? Seventy percent say yes, but then we do have a fourth, twenty-five percent who say no. And then here we asked, how important is improved internet service to your business going forward? So if you look at this red, about a third, thirty-two percent say improved internet is very important. They say their current internet, the current internet does not meet their needs. Forty-one percent say it's somewhat important. They say they don't have everything they want, but they can make do with what they currently have. And then nineteen percent say improved internet is not important. Their current service meets their needs. So we've got a few other findings to take a look at. This was the very first question on the survey. We asked, how would you rate the city of Johnston overall as a place to do business? And these results are very positive. Eighty-six percent of businesses rated the city as excellent or good. Only one percent give a rating of four. We asked, in the next five years, is your business considering any of the following? Just over a third, thirty-six percent are considering hiring additional staff. Or the eighteen percent are considering expanding or renovating in the city. If you look down here towards the bottom, only four percent say closing or downsizing. Only six percent say relocating to another location outside of the city. And then we asked, community leaders, how does your business evaluate the degree to which Johnston is inclusive and welcoming to all people? So if you look at these blue bars, most businesses feel that the city of Johnston is either very welcoming and include and inclusive or somewhat welcoming and inclusive. Seventy-six percent give that response. Only two percent, the red bar here, says they don't feel like the city is very welcoming or inclusive to all people. We asked, what are the best ways for the city to communicate important information to your business? Almost fifty percent prefer newsletter emails. Another forty percent say emails from staff or city leaders. Then about a third say the the city's website. So just a quick recap, we saw that most businesses feel like the city is an excellent or a good place to do business. Eighty-six percent felt that way. Businesses definitely have a high level satisfaction with city services. We saw on that chart early on that for most services, just a very, very small percentage of businesses are dissatisfied. The city services that businesses rated as most important were police services, street maintenance, economic development and city planning and development. Thirty-one percent are either extremely or very concerned about COVID nineteen as it relates to their business. Another thirty-nine percent are somewhat concerned. Then we have thirty percent who are not concerned. Seventy-three percent of businesses feel that improved internet service is very important or somewhat to their business going forward. And then respondents said that the best way for the city to communicate with their business is through e-newsletter emails and emails from city staff or city leaders. So that is everything that I had. The the report is more detailed and comprehensive, but there's kind of a high level look at the results. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Jason. It's really great presentation. I have a couple of questions on the internet. Can you go to the slide where you showed that percentage?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, which which internet slide was that?
Go back.
Keep going.
No, hold on. Go forward.
Go forward.
One more. One more. One more.
Here.
Yes, here.
Okay.
In the slide that is going to be framed. Here. Is there a breakdown of which ISP or the interest service provider provides what kind of service and which one are there?
Yeah. That that's a great question. We haven't done that yet, but that's absolutely something we can do. We can cross have the results and show these results for the different providers. Yeah, absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, you mean to say you have the results or you don't have the results for that?
No, we do have the results for that. We just haven't run that. We just have to run a cross tab and do a little more in-depth analysis. But we we do have that available. We just need to.
Okay. That'll certainly help to understand more of of each of the ISP are rated in each of this different factors. And the new the new ISP that's coming by soon will help us understand how they are mapping their services to.
Yeah, absolutely. That's that's definitely something we can do. That's a great point.
Other questions for Jason? Well, Jason, I think that I I think that we can all be pretty proud of the results that we got from this survey. You know, overall, the score is scores are very high. It's going to be a challenge for us to keep them that high the next time, next time we do this survey, so.
Yeah, yep, that's always the app. That's always the challenge when they start off so high, just keeping it there.
Yeah. But we can do it.
Yep, right.
Okay, well, if there's not any other questions or comments, Jason, thank you for going through this with us. Appreciate your good work.
Yeah, great. Thanks a lot, everyone.
You bet. See, Cindy, we're not, we don't have the agenda up, but I I know that the next item on the agenda is the proclamation for wear red day, remember everyone deployed and Chief Clark, do you want to talk to us a little bit about what this is all about?
Mayor, council, I would be very happy to. So some of the firefighters came to being asked if we could start a wear red campaign. We have two of our members that are also members of the military. And this is a program I had never heard of before, but I completely and totally support. So the idea is that on Fridays, we'll allow them to wear these red T-shirts. And red stands for remember everyone deployed. And so the firefighters are selling the T-shirts. The proceeds will go to send care packages to our members that are deployed. And then on every Friday, they'll also take up a an offering, I guess, and use those monies to send additional care packages throughout the year. Anytime that we've got members that are deployed with the service.
Very nice. So we do have a proclamation before us and the proclamation basically just states what the chief has just shared with us, that we do have members of our fire department that are serving in various branches of the military. We do have some that are deployed. And that the red T-shirts that are now for sale that say remember everyone deployed. The proceeds from that will go to create these care packages that we'll send to our deployed militaries. So a chief, how do they, how do they buy the T-shirt and how do they make contributions aside from the purchase of the T-shirts? Where do they go?
They can just get ahold of me and we'll make sure that it goes to the members that are collecting that and making sure that we get the T-shirts ordered.
So.
If any of the council members want one, just send me an email size and we'll get it placed in with the order.
And members of the public, can they go out on your website?
We haven't thought about that, but we can certainly make that available.
I think you should do that.
All right.
Probably some folks on the on the in the meeting tonight that might be interested in doing that. And then if we have it out on the website, others will probably see it as well and and make those contributions. So this is a good thing. Good that we have members of our department that are military members and it's and it's good that we support them in this way. So please, everybody consider it. Thank you. Okay, um, next item on the agenda under public communications is some discussion of the vacancy that now has been created by the resignation of Scott Seroyka. It's not a, it's not a listed item on the agenda, but it's one that we do need to have some conversation about. So I'm Jim or Tim, could you talk to us a little bit about what the options are with the vacancy that we have before us?
Well, the this is Tim Pearson and the options, once we receive the notice, the option is we can just by by appointment of the remaining council members, we can choose within sixty days a new council person. Out of extreme caution and respect for the citizenry, we've we've recommended that that we take option two under the statute, which is that we have a publication of our intent to select a a third party to fill that seat. And again, then with that intention, after the time notice and the publication that that was to give our citizens the opportunity, if they so wished, to have a request, a special election. The person that is selected, and we can do that as long and Cindy and I, Cindy and I have been on the phone a lot today. And so we've been working in in Jim's, Cindy's been talking to Jim. And so Cindy has a better idea on the timeframe on the publication than I do, but within a four to twenty-day timeframe, we can then have our a special meeting to vote on replacement, a person to take that that vacancy. That person would then serve. And they would serve out the the term until the next election unless there was a special election, which would require, I believe, fifteen percent of the voters that were that voted in the last general election. And I believe Cindy actually has a number there that would require to petition within a set timeframe. So really today is just to discuss the 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 procedure and then I think Cindy can go ahead and talk to you about the actual publication dates that we looked into Cindy or Jim.
So, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, as I understand what you've just told us, the city council in this situation where we have a vacancy essentially has two options. They can move forward and make an appointment to that position, or they could just go ahead and and call a special election. If we were to appoint someone, they would only serve until the next election, which would be November, so a relatively short period of time.
Yes, approximately eight months.
Yeah, so that position, that seat would be on the ballot for the next election. If we do move forward to make an appointment, we have to give public notice of that. And during that time period that they, you know, that the public notices out there, our citizens can come forward with a petition and request that we have a special election instead.
Correct.
So I guess the question for the council is, and 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 if we do have a special election, we would have a special election now, which Jim can talk to us a little bit about the cost of that, but I I know it's several thousand dollars. But even if we have a special election now, we would have another election for the same seat in November. Correct?
I'm sorry, you cut out there at the end.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If even if we had a special election now, there would be an election again in November for the same seat.
Yes, even if we had a special election now, then with all that cost, they would only be eligible to fill that until the next regular scheduled election.
So I guess with those options before us, council, what what are your thoughts in terms of proceeding forward?
Mayor, I'm not ready to say exactly, but I have a question. How the fifteen percent from the last election that would need to be on the petition, how many, how many is that?
Three hundred and twenty-two.
Okay, so that's a doable number because at one time it was, we were talking about a thousand. Okay. Um, I I think going forward with appointing someone is the way to go.
Yeah, I go ahead.
I just was saying, I agree. Appointing someone.
Yeah, I I support appointing somebody as well. I mean, I I think the only question in my mind a little bit is what process do we go through in sort of determining the right person now? I I my sense is is that I think we have kind of a unique situation here and that one, you know, this person would serve for less than a year. The the position would be up for election. And so if somebody had interest in it and they didn't, they weren't selected as part of this process, they would have an opportunity to run just as like we all have and and could fill out the term in November. We we, I mean, I think there's there's a person, at least one person that we all have kind of talked about who would be a good candidate that we all, I think, have consensus and feel very comfortable, could do the job. And also is somebody who's got previous experience on the council. And especially given in this time of COVID where we're doing everything virtually, having somebody who's got some previous experience can get up to speed right away. I'm comfortable if 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 there's a person who's willing to step forward and do it, appointing that person without going through a more formal, you know, hey, if you want to submit an application to to do this and we'll interview a bunch of different people. I I'm I'm comfortable moving kind of quickly through this process, kind of with the with the understanding that, you know, it's it's somewhere down the road where if we were looking at a more normal time and a longer period of service, a more formal, you know, interview type process might be appropriate. Other cities have done that, but I don't know that that's necessary in this situation.
This is a little bit of a curiosity.
This is all right. I'm a little bit of a curio- of curiosity. So, uh, I like that we can nominate someone, but I know we have the consensus, I'm sorry, the consensus on that. So what if a citizen would like to be nominated? Is there a process that citizens can come by and say, I would like to be nominated? Is that other than a special election?
Well, once there's notice published, um, you know, that, that notice will indicate that, that, you know, how it works under the statute and anticipate at that point in time, if people would like to be, uh, part of the process, they'll, uh, they can apply, uh, and, uh, to the city. Uh, but the, um, it, the timeframe on the special election, uh, uh, i- is a very compressed timeframe. So you'll know fairly, fairly rapidly about whether the citizens are wishing to, to have a special election. But I would certainly believe at the time that you publish your notice as to what your intentions are, that individuals would have the opportunity to make application if they're in or notify that they're, they are interested in being considered. And then at the special meeting, uh, that would be discussed at that point. And then upon motion, uh, whoever was, uh, selected and voted upon would be, then be appointed.
Okay. So, so Tim, when we, when we publish the notice, um, is the, is the, um, expectation that we identify, um, who we intend to appoint at that time?
I don't believe so. I think it's expectation that you're going to have a special, that you're. Cindy, you looked at this, um, we didn't, we couldn't get on this today, I think, on the notice section did? And you talked to, uh, the election officials. What did you see in terms of the, the, what they indicated to you?
Well, uh, and I didn't do a ton of work on, on what notices contain. Generally speaking, they are just that, Mayor, that we intend to appoint. But that the electoral, the electoral citizens have a, uh, right to call for a special election if that's what they so choose.
Right.
I, I didn't see any that mentioned the appointing, only the seat that had been resigned or vacated.
I'm, I'm not seeing, I'd have to go back to the publication section. But, uh, you know, uh, it, it's generally the publication is to notice that you attend to import, to appoint. And that if there's anyone, you certainly can add to the publication. I wouldn't see that to be an issue that anybody that'd be interested, uh, with, uh, contact City Hall or give a, a contact if someone is truly interested.
Well, and consistent with what Councilman Cope has already indicated in terms of, you know, kind of the characteristics of the individual that we might consider appointing.
Yeah.
You know, someone who has, you know, background experience can get up to, you know, that, that, uh, can, you know, just fill in quickly and for a short period of time and, and, uh, doesn't have a, a long learning curve. Uh, the name that immediately came to my mind when we became aware that we had a vacancy was, was John Temple. Um, John, as we know, uh, has served on the city council twice, um, before. He's also been a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, and he continues to monitor very closely our activities, uh, sometimes to our detriment, but he, he pays attention to what we do, um, you know, on a very regular basis. And so, um, you know, it's, it's a name that I've floated by, uh, some of you. And, and, uh, I think it's been received well. So I guess what I'd like to have just a little discussion about is whether or not John is someone that we could, um, all support. And, and I would suggest if that's the case, then we actually include that in the, the notice of intent to appoint. So people are aware, um, of, you know, who we have in mind. So it's not just kind of, you know, out there. Okay. What are, what are they thinking? Um, I think that we need to be as transparent as possible. And, and again, they would still have the opportunity if they choose to, uh, you know, petition for a special election.
Madam Mayor, I think that the, um, the notice provision on the publication would allow you that ability. Generally, you're, generally mo- most councils, what we've had in these situations, uh, don't quite know, um, who they're going to point. But in this particular, if there's a consensus, uh, I don't see any harm in put, in noting that in the, uh, in the publication.
Very good.
So Mayor, do you want me to give a little bit of a timeframe?
Sure, sure, sure.
So, um, the first opportunity we would have to publish the notice of our intent to fill the vacancy would be in the February 12th paper. We, our publications go in on the, on a Friday. We have to have the publications ready to go the Monday prior to that Friday. So it'd be, uh, on February 12th is when we would, um, would put notification in the paper that the council would plan to fill the vacancy. As, as Tim mentioned, there's a four day, a minimum of four day and a maximum of 20 day notice that this, um, uh, that we have to, um, fill the vacancy. And we would actually, within that notice, say, um, when we would plan on, on making the, the appointment. So when we talk about four days and 20 days, so that would mean between the 17th of March, excuse me, the 17th of April and the 3rd of March is when we would make that appointment. So that gives us, that's the four to 20 days that we would have to.
The 17th of February, Jim.
Seventeenth of February.
Seventeenth of February, 3rd to the 3rd of March.
Okay.
And then, um, and then once the council makes the appointment, the citizens have 14 days to file the petition that we've described, uh, if they want to call for a special election. And just to let the council know, the, the spec- the regular election is, would be November 2nd. And so whoever was appointed would serve, uh, if there, unless there's a special election called, would serve until November 2nd. At the November 2nd election, we will, we will have, um, two items on the ballot. One would be to elect the, uh, two council seats that are open, that are open as of the end of this year. And that would be Councilmember Evans and Councilmember Martin's seats. And then the second part would be to fill the vacancy, which we're talking about right now, which so mean, that would mean on, and November 2nd, the citizens will have the opportunity to vote. We will fill this vacancy, which means it would be somebody that served for two years until the end of the term for Councilman Seroka.
Can I, can I also add that even if you appoint someone now, let's say you appoint John in, in our correct timeframe, after our, our notice is published, he can stay seated even if the electorate decides to have a special election. He would stay in that seat until that special election is, is complete.
Well, yeah, well, the important part is, you know, with the budget coming forward and wanting to have someone available on those kind of issues. Um, Cindy's absolutely right. Basically how you look at it is that once you, uh, uh, select someone to that position, that person will be a voting member until either a special election occurs and they would, uh, win or lose, or if no special election until the next general election.
I fully support putting John on the, uh, notification. I think it's a perfect fit.
Yeah, I would agree with what Councilmember Evans comments as well. I mean, someday I hope to be as good a member of the city council as Ju- as John Temple, um, has served our city. I mean, he's just, I mean, it's, uh, he sets a high bar. So. Um, so it'd be, it'd be, it'd be a great opportunity to can, to get to, to serve with them for a little bit longer. So. Um, and that's why from, from my standpoint, because he's such a, an outstanding candidate and the, kind of the things I talked about earlier, I, I'm comfortable with sort of the idea of sort of saying, here's our person we intend to, to pick, um, or to, to seat in this position. And then if people want to, um, you know, the, if they want to have a special election, they can file a petition to do that, or they can wait until November and, and do it as well. So.
Okay. So I can, I would agree with both, uh, Councilman Cope and Councilman Evans. Uh, I would have to say that I'm, the only thing I'm sorry about is that I didn't ha- get a chance to serve longer with John Temple because, uh, I looked to him at, for mentoring. Uh, he wa- he was, uh, uh, a great, uh, voice on the city council, quite thoughtful in what he had to say. And, um, uh, he will be able to step right into this, uh, seat, um, almost seamlessly.
And I'd like to add that I, I not served with Mr. Temple before, so I don't know him well enough. But I agree with the rest of the other council members says, and I've heard about it, I've heard about him. And John Temple is certainly a good fit because of his past experience with, with this council. And I think he'll be a great, great person to be there.
So we don't have this on, uh, requiring any action on the agenda tonight. Um, Tim or Jim, it seems to me that we do need a resolution approved by the council that this is the direction that we're headed.
That's your call, Madam Mayor. I think that, um, you know, if that, if you want a, a resolution that this is a direction, you want him named in the, in the publication notice, that's certainly, I, um, I don't think it's mandatory, but obviously you can, you, it certainly, uh, is viable.
Yeah, it seems to me that we need, we need, we need something that the council takes formal action on, saying that this is our intention, that we intend to make an appointment and this is who we intend to appoint. So that we just have, you know, we have, we have a record of that.
Yeah.
So that would require a special meeting. Right, Jim?
Yes, we'd have to have a special meeting, um, before next Monday. Um, actually 10 o'clock in the morning on Monday is when we have to have the publication to the paper. I just want to note that the, the actual, what would be published in the paper would be the notice of intent to fill vacancy by appointment. So we are putting the public on notice that the council is intending to fill that vacancy. So that's really what the notice would say. So if we want to, um, take action on a, um, resolution, we would need to do it. Um, well, Tuesday's out because we have to have 24 hours notice. So it'd be Wednesday, Thursday or Friday. Um, have a special council meeting to, um, take action on, on the resolution.
But it could be a very quick meeting. It's just a one, one ju- one agenda item.
Right, that would be the only item on the agenda.
Right. So is everybody comfortable with proceeding in that fashion?
Yes.
Yes.
I agree.
So.
Then ju- just to make sure, I understand, then you'd still, you would still, uh, within the four to 20 day timeframe, after your publication, you have to have your special council meeting for, to set up, um, for the actual vote.
For the appointment itself, yeah.
Over and above any special meeting that you have a resolution as to your intent. Okay, that's fine.
And what, and this has to be a special meeting. It can't be as part of the February 16th meeting.
I don't know that it reaches a timeframe, does it, Jim?
No, the, um, because we can't publish until the 12th of, um, February, you have to have at least a minimum of four days before you can take action. And, um, so the 16th is four days, but typically you don't count the day that you publish and the day that the action's taken. So it just gets us right past the 16th. So we wouldn't be able to take action on the, um, uh, the appointment until after the sixth, actually the set, until after the 17th. So we will have to have a special meeting, or the other option is to wait till our March 1st meeting, uh, which does fall within that, uh, that, uh, uh, four and 20 day notice because, um, that runs till March 3rd is the, um, the 20 day notice. So we could either have a special meeting or make the appointment on March 1st. But again, then you start up the clock on the 14 day time period when citizens can call for a special election.
Jim, is there any concern that we won't have five voting members when we certify the budget?
Well, it, it's just, um, if you don't reach a majority, that then, you know, it, it would fail.
And the majority counts five, not four.
Right. You would have to have, majority would be, if it's two, two on the budget, then it fails for lack of, uh, lack of majority.
And I have to have a super majority on our first hearing, which is at the first meeting in March.
Have to have.
They have to have all four council members present.
Four councils.
Right.
But if we, if we have a special election, special meeting, if we have a special meeting on February 18th to actually approve seating this person, then we would have five people at the March 1st meeting, right?
Right.
Or even worst case scenario, we waited until the March 1st meeting and the first agenda item was to seat the person, then they would still be there either way.
You know, I don't see either one of these special meetings lasting more than 10 minutes.
Yeah, that, uh, that, yeah, yeah, exactly.
I think we should be able to make it work.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
And we can do it via Zoom, so we can fit it in much simpler now.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I'll reach out to get a time set up for a special meeting, um, and then get something set up on Zoom, so we can.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we, uh, work on both of those special meetings, just so that we have it on our calendars?
Okay, I will do it. Look for something for me here shortly.
Okay, anything else on this item? Okay, we are still under, uh, public communications. Do we have anybody, uh, that is with us this evening in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Let us know, Cindy. Please, uh, if you do, if you do, uh, want to make comment, please indicate it in the chat box.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. Well, let's move on to the next item on the agenda then, which is public hearings. And we have one, uh, public hearing this evening, and that is to conduct a public hearing on the matter of adoption of plans, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost for the Hyperion Point Channel Stabilization Project and can, and to consider resolution number 21 dash 32, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract and estimate of cost. Consider construction bids, consider resolution number 21 dash 33, making award of contract to RW Excavating of Prairie City, Iowa, and consider resolution number 21 dash 34, approving construction contract and bond. And we will open this public hearing at 7:55.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Dave Warding. Um, this is one of our stormwater projects, uh, for this coming, uh, construction season. Uh, this is just off of Northwest Beaver Drive and just to the north, uh, and west of Hyperion, uh, Point. Um, this is a, um, situation where we've got a, uh, drainage way that's been eroding and is getting close to the citizens', um, septic grinder pump. Uh, so this would, uh, extend some storm sewer and stabilize a downstream channel. Uh, we had an overall, uh, projects in the CIP at 225,000. Uh, we did, uh, put the project out for bid. We had eight bidders, uh, which was a great, uh, response. A low bid came back from RW Excavating out of Prairie City. Uh, they're the contractor who just completed the Ridge Crest, uh, Stormwater Project. I'm also up off of Beaver Drive, so familiar with the contractor and they're familiar with type of work. Uh, their bid was 105,657 dollars and 50 cents, which was 20.67% below the engineer's estimate. Uh, so a good result. And you look at the bid tab, they were all fairly close. So, so a competitive, uh, bid cycle.
It's great.
Um, did note in the, um, in the staff report that our total project costs with engineering and, uh, easement acquisition costs, um, bring the total project to around 182,000. So, um, we're bringing this one in under budget, um, which is always good. Uh, be happy to answer any questions. And Justin Ernst, our project engineer at Boltman Mink is on as well, if you have questions for him.
So council, have any questions? Hearing none. Uh, this is a public hearing on this matter. Do we have anyone in the audience would like to address council on the side on? Cindy, let us, are we seeing anybody in the chat room?
No, we are not.
Okay. So we will close the public hearing then at 7:57. Uh, we have, it looks like three items, resolution number 21 dash 32. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
The second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21 dash 33?
Move, Martin.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Oh. Oh.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 21-34?
I move, sorry.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have removed Item 6H. With that, do we have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
I move, Evans.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, let's take up Item 6H first, which is to consider Resolution Number 21-27. Authorizing Police Chief and Fire Chief to sign the updated memorandum of understanding with Camp Dodge Joint Maneuver Training Center. And Councilman Coop, you asked to have this removed. Do you want some, do you want someone to explain first what, what it proposes to do?
Well, I just, I had a couple of questions. So it sounds, according to the description, it says that the last agreement was signed in 2011. And when I looked through the agreement, it wasn't clear to me if there was a term for the length of this agreement. So is there a certain length of term for this agreement?
Councilman Coop, this is Chief Clark. It says it's going to be reviewed annually, but I do not see an expiration on it either. I think we talked about, like, every three years it would actually be updated. But it's really written, it says that we just termination, either party may terminate at any time, given 50 days notice.
And do you guys, has there been a kind of a regular practice of, of, of the, of both you and Chief McDaniel meeting with the folks from Camp Dodge and the sheriff's office to review this agreement periodically, or, or not?
Not, probably not as often as we should. I think one of, this was one of the things that the outgoing Colonel was making sure got done before he retired. And so we had meetings, we have discussed it. We also talked about working on another coordination memo that really kind of lays out a few more details. The main idea of the memorandum of understanding is just so that it's clear what the sheriff's department is providing, what Johnston Police Department is providing, and what the fire department is providing as far as services. Just kind of a general overview. And then as far as the coordination of what Camp Dodge is going to do as far as providing tours and all those things. They're still working on that, but that's more kind of a internal agreement between all the agencies. But as far as a formal agreement with the city, because only the council can, can sign contracts and MLUs like this. That's why it's being presented to the council now.
Yeah, I certainly don't have a problem with moving forward with the agreement. I think one of the reasons I wanted this item on the non-consent agenda is that we really rarely have an opportunity to talk about the city's relationship with Camp Dodge at the council. This is one of the first times, I think it's, it's been an item. And I seem to recall, I thought, in one of our previous strategic planning sessions, we talked about a little bit about the city's relationship with Camp Dodge. I know I personally was, 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 was kind of disappointed that we weren't able to work better with Camp Dodge as they, as they look to grow to the north up around Sailorville Road. And so I'm always looking for ways for us to, to find better communication with Camp Dodge. And that was one item that I thought was really, the communication was, could have been a lot better. And so just kind of wanted to kind of bring that to everybody's attention, because I think our relationship with the, with the camp is, is really important to the community and, and needs to be something we emphasize.
Absolutely.
If you could jump in here, this is Chief McDaniel. Just to give you a little wider perspective on this agreement, the last group was in 2011. And that was focused primarily on the EMS billing services associated with that time, the Camp Dodge Fire Department and the coordination with the Johnston Fire Department. The, the law enforcement agreement didn't exist in the previous one, so this is a complete rewrite. And to Councilmember Coop's point, this has been an effort of discussion ongoing to memorialize our practices and establish that, that true relationship that, that everyone starts from a ground floor and agrees to responses and that sort of thing. So I think we're definitely making steps in the right direction. And, and this will finally memorialize what really is current day practices as far as public safety responses to that area.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman Martin.
I just have a quick question. I think this mutual aid agreement is great. And I, here's a question for both chiefs. Because we're providing this mutual aid per the document that I read, there are some times when Camp Dodge, they don't have their own law enforcement, they don't have a fire department, so they're looking to us to help them out. Do we then, I would think at Camp Dodge, there possibly is some special circumstances in terms of perhaps dangerous chemicals or other, other things. Do we, would you foresee buying special equipment because we are providing this service?
No, I don't see any, any need for special equipment. I mean, they've been very good since I've been here in four years about communicating any hazards that they have. They report all of that through Tier Two. They also have some other unique items that they send a letter annually to update us and make sure we know where it's at and what it is and what the hazards are. And so that type of communication's been good, but at this time, I don't see anything we would need specialized as there's materials, equipment, or any of that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you track how many calls that you provide service on, out to Camp Dodge, whether it be fire or police calls?
We do, and we can. I can't give you that off the top of my head, but I could find out.
Yeah, that'd be something I'd be, be interested in kind of knowing.
Certainly.
Any other questions? Comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 21-27?
I move.
Got a motion from Ready?
Second, Evans.
Second, Evans. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready? Ready?
Did you say my name?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the next item on the, under the non-consent agenda, which is Item 8A. Consider Removing From the Table and Consider Approval of the Third Reading and Adoption and Publication of Ordinance Number 1046. An Official Zoning Map Amendment for Approximately 8.93 Acres From AR to R1100 With An Overlay, With A Overlay. The subject property is located at 11087 Northwest Towner Drive, PZ Case 20-23. So to consider this item first, we need a motion to remove it from the table. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Martin.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Oh.
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, we have the item before us. Who's going to take this one?
This Clayton Ender. The property owners have indicated they are prepared to have the council consider third reading and adopt and publish. They are available on the call if there's any questions of them. There are no updates from staff.
Okay. Council have any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve third and final reading and to adopt and publish ordinance number 1046?
So moved, Martin.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Item 8B. Consider Second Reading of Ordinance Number 1047, Amending the Birchwood Crossing PUD to Allow The Display, Sales, and Maintenance Of All Electric, Of All Electric Vehicles, AEVs, And To Allow IC Industrial Commerce Park District Uses And Outdoor Storage Within Parcel D Of Said PUD. The subject property is located north of Birchwood Court at 7801 and 7901 Birchwood Court.
This is Aaron Wolf with the Community Development Department, and this is second reading of the ordinance. There have been no changes since the first reading.
Okay. Council have any questions for Aaron? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1047?
So moved, Evans.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8C, Consider Approval Of Resolution Number 21-28, A Resolution Approving The Site Plan And Preliminary Plaid For Windsor Row Homes. The subject property is located at 9121 Windsor Parkway, PZ Case 20-30.
This is Clayton Ender again.
Okay.
Gary's Homes has submitted this site plan and preliminary plot for the development of 4.22 acres into 33 townhouses. Each, each townhouse unit would be individually platted and sold independently and available either for owner occupied or rental by the individual owner. History on this property. It was originally zoned as part of the Windsor Office Park PUD back in 2002. It has been vacant since that time. There have been a number of rezoning requests over the years, ranging from high density residential to the current zoning, which is R3's medium density residential restricted to townhomes, which that got rezoned in 2017. It was plowed into its current lot configuration in 2017 as well as part of the overall development of the vintage co-op housing, which is immediately east of this project. It is on our comprehensive plan as medium density residential, which is generally six to 10 units an acre, townhouses. That is, is a typical type of development there. And really, we're looking for developments that are intended to blend into the scale of a single family neighborhood. And as I said, the property is zoned R3, restricted to townhomes only. And Cindy, can you open up the landscape sheet that I gave you earlier today? We'll talk from that one. The site will be served by all, all utilities, sanitary sewer, water, and storm. Those will all be private, internal to the site. Access for the site will be, there'll be two access points to Windsor Parkway that you'll see when the drawing opens up. The easternmost access is a shared drive between vintage co-op and the townhomes. The western drive would be limited to the townhouse units only. All interconnected with private internal streets. Cindy, are you able to get that to pull up?
Are you not seeing anything?
No, I don't see anything.
Okay, let me try it differently.
We'll let her try to get that open first. There we go. Yeah, so on, on this sheet, the, the right hand side is east, left is west. So you got, and Windsor Parkway is on this, on the bottom of the sheet there. For open space, the site is required to maintain 30% open space. They comply with that. And they do meet open space landscaping requirements as well. As for drainage, the site generally drains from west to east. It does, as part of the vintage co-op development in 2017, there was a wet pond and a dry and constructed on the vintage co-op property designed to accommodate stormwater management for the entire vintage plus the townhomes. We have had FOTH do a secondary review of the stormwater report following Planning and Zoning Commission. There were concerns from vintage co-op that drainage wasn't in compliance with previous approvals. Our consulting engineer, FOTH, has confirmed that the site is in compliance. It was assumed at the time that the combined total between vintage and the townhomes would be 40% impervious. When you look at the combined total with this proposal, it's 38.5% impervious, so it is in compliance. I did provide you a memo in the staff report outlining the findings of, of that secondary review. And I do know there was some public comment on that, and the members of the public may be on the line tonight if they wish to add to that. In regards to buffers, there are three required buffers. There is a 50-foot buffer between the townhouses in the commercial zone land to the south on Windsor Parkway that's split evenly between the two sides. There's a 30-foot buffer on the west along the single family homes. They're showing that. And then there is a 20-foot buffer on the north. The applicant has requested that buffer be waived. When vintage co-op was approved, that buffer was waived on their site. And they are looking for the same waiver that vintage co-op was granted. Planning and zoning commission did receive public comment from a neighboring property owner to the north in opposition to the waiver. That property owner requested that the buffer be required as code dictates. Planning and zoning commission did recommend that the buffer be added in per the 20-foot request. I do believe the applicant or the representative will want to address the buffer item this evening. I did provide you a couple amended resolutions in the staff report to kind of give you some options there. One is, option one is the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. Option two is the applicant's request with waiver. And I gave you an option three, which is maybe somewhere in the middle, an alternative, a compromise. But ultimately, the applicant is, is seeking approval of option two. But the option one is really what is on the table tonight. Because that's what P&amp;Z has recommended. The site also does include, or the, the city has done a open space amenity study for apartment and townhouse developments. That is not a codified requirement at this time, but if we utilize that study, we find that the site should include some open space areas that are usable for the residents. And the applicant is proposing to have decks and patios for each individual unit to satisfy a portion of the recommended area. And they have identified an open space amenity area in the northeast corner of the site, which would generally be flat and available for the residents to utilize. Cindy, I don't know if you're able to pull that screen back up, the, the drawing. Yeah, that northeast of the top right, there's kind of a circled area. P&amp;Z did discuss that area, and they wanted to make sure that the area was really thought through and designed for the residents that are going to be living in that space. So what the applicant has done is they provide, they, they would provide a sidewalk to the area with a bench, some landscaping to help frame the area and help define some boundaries to the space. And then they have noted on this plan set that the homeowners within the association would determine the amenities that they desire in that space, and they could install those at their leisure. But they are setting up the space for that use. Staff is comfortable with that. And as for architecture, when you're looking at residential development, we look for, you know, buildings that are going to generally be compatible with residential. generally be compatible with residential areas and break up the plainness of space. There's four criteria that are in the staff report. The applicant has provided elevation for both their five-plex and two-plex buildings, breaking up the plainness on the front side with some material changes and some different roof lines. We did receive public comment from a property owner to the west in opposition to the architecture specifically of the rear of the two-five plexes on the far west side of the site with concerns regarding the plainness of appearance and it's just looking at a giant wall that's just a lap sighting material, all, all looking the same. The applicant did earlier today provide a revised, a slightly revised drawing, how they could break up the tho- those elevations a bit by providing some separation between the materials. Let that down. I gave Cindy the wrong one. This, this explains that they gave me a better one that had the windows. But there'd, there'd be doors and windows in back. But what they're trying to illustrate is each individual unit would essentially have its own characteristics, color, style, separated with a vertical band to try and break up the individual units and break up that wall space a bit. P and Z did not include any conditions regarding architecture, but they did hear that public comment. As for parkland, we do require public parkland dedication. In this particular case, staff is recommending an equal value alternative of cash in lieu of land dedication. And that would be outlined in a development agreement to come with a final plat. With that, I believe I have covered everything I want to cover. I'm happy to take any questions. The applicant's representative is available for questions as well or additional comments. And I do believe you have members of the public that are in attendance tonight and may wish to provide comment as well. And that wraps up my comments.
Thank you, Clayton. Before we, before we take comments from the public, I'll ask the council if they have any questions at this point for either Clayton or for the applicant.
I'm just curious if, if for option one, the, the buffer, would it be the same buffer that there is on the west's property line?
Would the north buffer be the same?
Yeah.
No, because the west buffer is a thirty-foot buffer. The north is a twenty-foot. Typically, they would be the same, but the western buffer is greater. And that goes back to the original development of the site as, when it was originally supposed to be an office park. So there was a requirement for a greater buffer between what was then commercial to residential, but that, that greater restriction carried forward at this time. So it's a slightly lesser buffer on the north than what you would see on the west.
Okay, thanks.
So, so Clayton, the differences between option one, two, and three deal just with the north buffer, is that correct?
That is correct.
So option one is requires the twenty-foot buffer.
Correct.
Option two eliminates the twenty-foot buffer.
Correct.
And then what is option three?
Option three would be an alternative buffer consisting of one evergreen tree and two understory trees for every fifty lineal feet of buffer. So you would essentially get three trees per fifty feet.
But And how is that different from the normal twenty-foot buffer?
Typically, we would require shrubs within a normal buffer. We would require overstory trees within a buffer, understory trees, and evergreen trees. So that alternative would be just one evergreen and two understory trees.
So a fair amount of less material then?
Yes, and you know, I, I, I think I would maybe defer to the applicant's representative a bit there. I was sharing some discussion with them earlier today. Ultimately, their request is waiver of the buffer. Staff has put forward this alternative buffer, just maybe as a middle ground there to, as a starting point or even as the thing that maybe is approved. But the intent there is from the back of those units on the north down to the property line, you have about a six to ten-foot fall in grade elevation. So the thought is if you put shrubs along that property line, by the time they grow up, are they really screening anything?
Well, I'd be right, no, I get that, and I, my, my opinion has always been that shrubs are useless. I really want more trees. Before you get, defer to the builder, one more question. These roads are private, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Clayton, Clayton, can you do the, the vicinity map? Can you pull that up or Cindy? So this, the, the area to the north that we're talking about this twenty-foot buffer, it looks like it's, it's heavily wooded on the, to the north, right? And so we're providing a buffer to an area that there's already a pretty significant buffer. And, and it looks like there's a creek, there must be a creek that runs there. And so that's not likely to be developed. Am I, am I, or am I jumping to too much with that second statement?
Well, you are right that, you know, it is heavily tree. There is a creek that goes through there. Development potential, especially south of the creek, is limited. I would, I don't want to say it's impossible, but it's certainly limited. It would be challenging. And I think the point that the property owner was making, and I'm not sure if they're on the call tonight, but I think the point they were making is they own that entire, the, the entire piece they have there, which is kind of the centerpiece in the middle on the hatched area to the north. And if they want to enjoy their whole property, including the far southern area as a single-family property, shouldn't they have the right to do that? And the code requires a buffer to single-family uses, regardless of whether or not it's an open space area or actively used for a house. I don't want to necessarily put words in their mouth, but that's kind of the takeaway I got from it was, you know, we, we got to consider that, you know, their entire property is zoned for single-family, and this is a requirement between medium and single-family.
And, and just to, I guess, follow one step further. And so the vintage co-op, which is the, the land to the, to the east or, or right, they, we waived the twenty-foot buffer for them, is that right?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And to my knowledge, we did not receive public comment on that request or opposition to that request at that time.
And the same sort of single-family argument would apply to those two lots that are, that are but the vintage co-op, correct?
Yeah, the same logic would apply the whole way. We just didn't receive opposition on that specific request.
Okay.
On this one.
Other questions for Clayton? Well, why don't we, why don't we hear the applicant's response to the buffer issues before we take public comment?
Yes, this is Melissa Hills with Civil Engineering Consultants, twenty-four hundred eighty-sixth Street in Urbendale, representing Jerry's Homes. We felt that the, the buffer requirement on the north really, it, it wouldn't do a whole lot to add that buffer when there's already two hundred to three hundred foot swath of trees on the neighboring property. And also, the elevation difference between the units and that, and where that buffer would be placed is, is about ten foot of, of difference. So in order to actually get something that would screen those units, I mean, you'd have to have some fairly tall trees to even do any type of screening. And, and I would, I would argue that the, the existing plant material on the, along the creek is, is doing an adequate job of buffering those existing residents from anything that would be built on this lot. If you, if you pull up Google Earth, which I did today, and also either that or Drive Out at the site, if you, if you're just standing on the site, you know, the nearing, nearest residence to the north is like three hundred feet. And you can't see through the trees to see where that residence is. So I guess our argument is that the, the buffer is there and not really necessary, nor would it, would it provide what it's supposed to provide based on the elevation differences.
Any questions from the council?
No, go ahead, Councilman Co.
Could you address the questions that have been raised about, from the folks from the west about lack of kind of diversity of, of design along that wall and what steps you, you are willing to take to kind of address those issues?
Yeah, the, the developer is willing to vary building color between units and and we are planting a, a full thirty-foot buffer along there. We're also saving all of the existing trees that are in between the two properties. And again, if you were to do a Google Street View standing on our lot, you would see that the existing trees provide a visual buffer. And the residents that were complaining, their, their unit is actually turned away from this development. So I don't even know that they have a window view of this development. But we're certainly doing what we can, I guess, in terms of varying building color and providing the buff, required buffer elements.
And, and just one last real quick question. You, in the, in the, the discussion about outdoor amenities, there was, you indicated there, there was some indication that there'll be decks or, or patios. It looks like these are all patios, right? Just kind of ground floor plat, patios?
Some of them are patios and some of them are decks. It kind of depended on what the elevation was doing behind the unit. We do have decks on a few, on a few of the buildings.
So second floor decks, you mean, or?
Those would be first floor decks.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for the app, for the applicant before we go to public comments, questions?
Um, I have a question for Clayton. So when landscape buffers were created, and this is a, you might not know this, but I think it was mostly intended for screening. But I think we need to start thinking about other things landscape do than screening. They serve stormwater functions, pollution, minimizing functions, wildlife, habitat, and I could go on and on. I don't have the list in front of me. So while these buffers are created, people think about them only in terms of screening. There's a whole lot more trees do for us than just screen other buildings from each other. Clayton, would you say that, that's correct? That mostly these buffers were done for screening, but they do have other values?
Yes, that would be accurate. And I, I would just add that when we talk about screening, it's not just screening a view from internal of, of a home or from a deck. It, it from anywhere on the adjoining property. You know, the, the neighboring property owners, they own all of their lot. They can use all of their lot as single-family homes. And I think there's an intention of that neighbor rights should be respected, and we should recognize that they have the right to use their whole property and enjoy it. So but, but it's, you, you, but to go on, you know, buffers do add, have those other added benefits as well. But the code was specifically more written for the, with the intention of screening.
And then the next question I'd have for you, Clayton, because you have, I forget what your, you, you have a forestry degree or something of that sort. Would you say that the average, what's the average lifetime, you know, planting like this in ten years, say, would you say twenty-five percent of the trees might die off by that time? Because you know, frankly, we get a lot of die-off in plantings, especially plantings that are somewhat commercialized?
I, I do not have a degree in forestry. I dabble a bit. So I'm not going to profess to, to know what would happen. It's going to vary based on species. What I do know, though, is if we increase diversity of tree species within buffers and open space landscaping, we reduce the risk of an entire site becoming vacant of any landscaping. You know, if it's monoculture and a disease or a pest comes in that impacts the one species, you lose everything. But if we have at least a diversity, you don't lose everything.
Okay, and, and I appreciate that. And I know that we've probably dabbled farther than we wanted to here, but it was good to talk about landscape there. Thanks.
Other questions from the council? If not, I know we have a couple of residents that would like to make some comments. I think the first is either Steven or Naomi Thomas. And I believe that the line has been opened up for you to speak if you would like to make your comments now.
Well, thank you. We very much appreciate the council's time on this matter. So I hope that everyone in the council had a chance to read through our written feedback. I know that we were kind of late getting it to the game here, so hopefully you had a chance to have that. And hopefully that was the right way to provide said feedback, if you will. So I guess with that question, I would ask, has there been an opportunity to digest that? Should I summarize that if folks hadn't had a chance to work through the reading materials provided in the feedback?
Steven, just to make sure that we're all aware of what your comments or concerns are, why don't you just spend two minutes or less giving us the, the high level?
All right. So at the big picture, we've been a part of this journey. I know we ran a petition against the high-density housing, and I kind of talked through some of this. And when this was proposed for zoning, we didn't oppose the R three. We felt like that was a reasonable transition out of the high density that had been rezoned, I guess, further east. When we looked at these plans, though, it feels a whole lot like we're neighboring high-density housing. And I know chapter one sixty-six point three-five, as well as the comprehensive plan, there's a real desire to blend into single-family homes. And so they talk about things like, you know, perimeters can be varied or multiple buildings are proposed. Multiple buildings sit at angles to one another. And then, you know, we talk about exterior building materials. Our ask is that the council consider getting these folks to think about actually changing the size and shape of some of these buildings as they neighbor the western developments. We know it's in their toolbox because we see different sizes and shapes of units on their plan. And we believe those would be more appropriate on the western side. We understand the desire for density to make this economically viable. But as stated, we're going to live with this for ten years, twenty years, thirty years. We've been in our home for fifteen-plus years. And we would like for this to be something that has, for lack of a better term, a sense of place and really has the right feel as we transition. You know, I know that Melissa offered feedback that we don't face these folks. But if you pull up Google Earth, you can see our back deck has a wonderful view of what these buildings will look like, as does our backyard. And so this is really important to us. Yeah, the, the whole house does, the kitchen window, everything else. So we just like for this to be taken into consideration. These folks, we believe they're at maximum density for this space. There are probably many ways that these things could be moved around a little bit, if you will, to accommodate this and still have a viable plan for the developer. We appreciate the feedback that they We appreciate the feedback that they might be willing to run a horizontal stripe in this five-plex as a giant wall of vinyl. Or maybe have vertical differentiation, but that doesn't really fix the challenge, right? There's no, there's no gaps to see between. There's just nothing. There's just one solid wall. Even the R4 housing long ago, they were at angles, if you will, on the lot. So they preserve some of those sightlines. So, uh, we would just ask the council to consider this and would be happy to, uh, work with the developer if we could, uh, to figure out a way that would be of, uh, mutual benefit here.
Thank you. We have some other individuals that would like to speak. It looks like maybe Randy Beavers. Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, the, uh, Randy Beavers, uh, at the Vintage Cooperative, uh, property, 9,001 Windsor Parkway. Clayton, in making his introduction, made reference to townhomes being owner or rentals. And, uh, that was the, tonight was the first we had heard about potentially renting and. I understand homeowners can have an opportunity to rent properties, single-family homes, I guess, at most any time, but. Does the city ordinance, uh, provide for that opportunity for this type of a development?
Hey, would you like me to address that now?
Yes, uh, uh, let me make sure that Randy is, is that, is that all of your comments and questions? Okay. Sure. Go ahead and, go ahead and respond then, Clayton.
City, uh, city ordinance, uh, allows for rental of any residential property with a rental certificate. These units have not, the, the developer has not indicated that they intend to rent these. The intention of my comment was each individual unit will be owned. If the owner chooses to live in it themselves or rent it out, that is their prerogative. City code does not restrict it. In fact, the city has very limited ability to restrict that, um, under the Fair Housing Act, as it could potentially be housing discrimination. So it's intended to be owner occupied, but there is always the opportunity that. They could rent it unless as part of an HOA, they restrict it out as a private agreement.
The next individual's name I see is Dick Brayley. Dick, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, please. Uh, thank you very much. I'm Dick Brayley and I'm the president of the Board of Directors at Vintage Co-op. Our major concern through this process has been the handling of the stormwater into our retention pond and the, uh. The potential for silting and gumming up the works to get the water to the pond. At, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, this was talked about. And the agreement was made that the calculations would be reviewed and they were. We also had a chance to, uh. We also had a chance to submit our own thoughts on the matter. And I understand that 38.5% does not rise to the level of 40%, uh, but awfully close. Still makes us apprehensive. The recommendation on the sheet from the engineers that, uh, they recommend permanent siltation controls. Prior to the storms, who are leaving Lot 1, um. I'm not an engineer, but can you describe those to me, please?
Is that, is that your, uh?
That, that's my only question. That's still our major concern.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Clayton, can you respond to that for us, please?
Um. You know, I, I may look to, um, Melissa Hill's, uh, engineer to, um, provide some guidance as to. What would qualify as permanent siltation control? Since that's a comment coming from our engineer, uh, maybe best explained by another engineer. Okay?
I, I, uh, I actually, this is Melissa again. I actually am not sure what FOTH is referring to because, uh. I, permanent siltation control, I'm not sure what they're referring to. I, I kind of assumed from their comment, what they meant was controlling erosion during construction. There won't be erosion once the site is fully vegetated and, uh, the units are built. So I, I think probably what FOTH meant was temporary sedimentation control, which we're required to do as our, as part of our NPDES permit. Uh, when we, when we construct, we have to control erosion leaving the site. And, and I don't know what FOTH's intent was with, um, permanent erosion control. That didn't make sense to me, I guess.
Okay.
And we can follow up with both. I, I don't know if we have anyone. I don't know if Patrick is on. I don't think so. That may be something we have to follow up with both on.
Probably should do that, Clayton. I think we should all be clear about what's intended there, so.
Well, and it was, it was just a recommendation too, so, huh, for what it's worth. But we are required to control our erosion during our construction and during our building, and we intend to do so.
Sure. You know, I think Cindy, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. I think I've identified everyone who wants to, did want to speak or has indicated that they want to speak. Did I miss anyone?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Uh, could you please identify who you are and your address?
This is Jana and Harold Turner. We are, uh, the people on the north side of the buffer. Our address is 9110 Northwest 62nd Avenue in Johnston.
Okay, go ahead and, and share your comments, please.
Okay. Uh, we just wanted to reiterate the reasons that we were requesting for the city to honor the buffer that they do require. We had presented this to the Planning and Zoning, uh, Committee, and they did also, uh, recommend for the buffer not to be waived. I'll, I'll just briefly mention what I had said to them. Uh, my property is directly affected by this 20-foot buffer as it joins the proposed property line. I feel that the visual landscaping buffer, which is required for good reason. Should not be waived as it would have a direct effect of the purpose and privacy of my residential land. Uh, I do spend many weekly hours in my backyard and we've continued to mow and develop it with a park-like atmosphere. With, with walking paths throughout the property. It's a significant reason why we purchased the property. So again, I would just request that you would honor the existing requirements that the city has put in place. In view of the property lines for this new property and not permit the waiver for the 20-foot buffer on the north side. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's anyone else would like to make any comments to the council, please indicate in the chat box, uh, now that you would like to do that. We're going to move into discussion by the council and then, uh, a vote by the council, so, or action by the council. Is there anyone else would like to address, uh, the council on this item? Cindy, do we have anybody indicating that they do?
I am not seeing anyone else.
Okay. Okay, council, um, turning it over to you, discussion. I guess the first item that we need to discuss is the, um, the buffer.
Mayor, my opinion would be that they should plant the 20-foot buffer.
Yeah, and then this is Councilman Coop. I, I'll, I'll support planting the buffer. I, I think it's, it's, uh, a little bit hypocritical of us to require them to have the buffer and not to have required it. Of the vintage townhomes. Um, I think that's, it's hard to defend doing it in one place, but not the other, but I'll, um. I'll, uh, I'll, I'll be willing to support. I think it's option one, which right, has the 20-foot buffer.
And I agree. I'll support option one.
I do too, the option one.
Okay. And that was what Planning and Zoning recommended as well, correct?
Correct, option one.
Okay. Other discussion on this?
You know, I think the only question that I, I mean, like, you know, the, the issue of whether you can rent it out or not, I think that's, that's, it's pretty clear. Clayton, I think made a very good point that that's a, that's an issue really that the city cannot get itself involved in. If the homeowners association typically that's a HOA issue and, and so I think, I don't think we can do anything about the rentals. I think the one issue for me that I'm, you know, the issue of the, of the stormwater drainage, I don't know if there's any unresolved issues there or not, or if. If there's, if we have a later opportunity to review that. The one question I'm not still kind of clearing my mind or feel like we've got a comfortable resolution is. For the concerns that have been raised by the folks who live to the west and whether there's sort of adequate diversity of, um, the wall. And the angles and whether there's a willingness by the, uh, the developer to consider any changes to the layout. In, in the, in the plat to, to accommodate those concerns. Cause I do think those concerns are, are, are worth considering. So that, that would, to me, I think that's, and that's not something, I don't, I'm not sure that's something we could resolve tonight. So that may require us to, to, I'm not, we may have to carry this over to another issue, but that, that's the one issue that. I, I do think I'd like to see some consideration given by the developer too.
Other comments on that or response from the applicant?
I, uh, Mayor, I would support, uh, that the, that the developers should do a better.
Hello? Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, this was, this is Melissa again with, uh, representing the developer. Um, we looked at several different layouts for this piece in designing it and, and we're not able to get, um. The five-plex units to work on the east-west street because of the site slopes. Uh, and in order to get the density, those five-plexes had to go on that north-south street just, just because of the slope of this site. Um, but we looked at several different layouts and, uh, and this is, this is the best layout we were able to come up with. So. You know, we, we did look at several options in laying this out, so.
Well, I guess I would say in response to that, 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 that the, the density that you're seeking is what you are seeking. It's not required by city code that you have that level of density. You could have a lower density and have more variety. So that's, um, the, the fact that you feel like you have to have this design to get this many units onto the plat is, um. Kind of your, your, that's a decision you've made. And I think it's a perfectly legitimate question for the neighboring property owners to, to raise questions about. You know, whether that presents a, uh, a perspective that they want to have to, to view over the next 15, 20, 25 years. So, um, that's just my perspective on it.
Um, I would support Councilman's Coop's comments. I think that they could add some relief to that back. Five-plex to, uh, you know, maybe a, a, a portion of a peak that jets out. Or a bay, you know, just some relief to it because I would also say it does somewhat look like, um. Could have been an apartment complex and not townhomes. So, um, I support. Asking the developer to do, to do something more, to make more creative with that blank foot, uh, face besides color.
I guess if Clayton's still on, is there any way he could bring up that latest rendition that he had?
Cindy will pull that up, but I am here. I, I apologize. Uh, they did send me a drawing that had the doors and windows and I gave Cindy the wrong one, but. It's pretty much this with just doors and windows shown. Two windows upstairs, a window and a sliding door on the first floor.
Yeah, and I can't, this by looking at this.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, I, I, I don't, it's, it's very confusing to me.
Yeah, that's not the right layout. That's not the one we sent. That's not the one we sent earlier today.
I could probably, Cindy, I could probably send that to you right now.
Why don't you do that, Clayton? Because I, this is an important, um, this is an important issue. We need to get this resolved. So if there's something, something additionally that we need to see, let's, let's get it up.
Yeah, here we go. All right, Cindy, that should be your way now.
Go waiting, Clayton.
Okay. Says it's on my end.
Okay, well. Checking to make sure it didn't go to spam, so. Mayor, it also appears there's another member of the public that would like to speak.
Okay, well, we're in the, uh, council discussion portion of the, uh, discussion, so. Don't want to.
That's fine. I'm just.
Yeah. Where's it, where's it at, Cindy?
Uh, it's, um, Stephen and Naomi Thomason.
Oh, we've heard.
Yep, they just have their hand raised for additional comment.
Yeah, there you go. There's the. Slightly cleaned up.
So the, basically that they're adding different colors to the buildings. Is that what, 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 is that what they're saying, or?
Yeah, they would break that up. So each individual unit would have a variation in color. Sorry, Cindy, can you go back to?
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, they would just break it up, um, so that there's the, each individual unit has the, a distinguished color to make them appear as separate units.
And I guess I'm kind of leaning more toward Rhonda and Tom. I mean. Different colors is nice, but. That, that is, that. Everything's so monotonous.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if maybe there's opportunity to, um, you know, various different window treatments.
Yeah.
You know, uh. It, it was indicated maybe roofline. I don't know how practical it is to bury up the roofline in the rear, um, but maybe there's some opportunity there.
Maybe one windows have grids and the next ones don't and.
But a, a manner to try to make each individual unit have a bit of a unique character to itself.
Right, right. The entrances around the doors.
Yeah, I, I guess what I would suggest, I think we're providing some good feedback to the applicant here. And I, I guess I would like to suggest, um. Tabling this item. And then let the applicant, they've, I think, heard, and obviously we have other suggestions, we can, we can spill those out as well. But to table this item, have them come back, meet with, um, staff and maybe staff provide an opportunity for. A couple of the elected officials to sit in on that discussion as well and sort of see if we can get closer to something that, that, um. We could, you know, that has a higher level of comfort level for the folks who, who live to the west.
Is that a motion, Councilmember Coop?
It is.
Do we have a second?
I do, so.
We have a motion and a second further discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coop?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Clayton, does that give you enough to follow up?
Yes, staff will work with the applicant. Um, were there specific council members that wanted to be involved in the review process?
I would be willing.
And I would be willing as well. It needs to be on a Friday. And I would be willing as well. It needs to be on a Friday.
I will send a follow up.
Maybe it's Saturday, the way this week is heading.
Okay.
I will send a follow-up email.
Great, thanks, Clayton. Moving on to item, and thanks to everyone who provided comment to us. Um, moving on to item eight D, consider the following items related to the preliminary plat for Chesterfield Estates Platte Two located north of Northwest Seventy-Eighth Avenue between Northwest One Hundred and Fourth and Northwest One Hundred and Seventh Streets. Resolution twenty-one dash thirty, a resolution approving a development agreement with Chesterfield Heights LLC and resolution twenty-one dash thirty-one, a resolution approving approving the preliminary plat and fa- final plat for Chesterfield Estates Platte One.
Uh, this is Aaron Wolf again. Uh, Cindy, if you would, would you begin by opening up the, uh, attachment that starts PPT preliminary plat?
Yes, just a moment, Derek. Is that one of our councilmembers speaking?
Those are too deep a voices for my dogs.
Cindy, that's good there. Okay, so Chesterfield Estates Plate Two depicts the subdivision of twenty acres into twenty-eight single-family lots. And this property is, uh, north of Northwest Seventy-Eighth Avenue and west of Northwest One Hundred and Fourth Court. Um, water to serve this subdivision will be extended from the east adjacent subdivision and the majority of the lots will be served from an extension of the sanitary sewer from Hidden Valley Estates to the north and the east. Um, of course sidewalks are required along all public streets in the subdivision, and with regard to parkland, the developer has chosen to pay up parkland dedication fee at the time of final plat instead of dedicating physical parkland. Uh, with regard to public streets that, um, you can see on on this, uh, flat drawing here that, uh, Northwest Eightieth Avenue will be extended to the west property line of this subdivision. And these twenty-eight lots will be temporarily served by a single access from Northwest One Hundred and Fourth Court, which is is, um, where Northwest Eightieth connects to the to, um, Northwest Hundred and Fourth Court. It's slightly off the screen here, yep, to the, uh, to the east. And I say they will have a temporary single access from One Hundred and Fourth Court because there is opportunity when the west adjacent property develops to further extend Northwest Eightieth Avenue and connect back to Northwest Seventy-Eighth. So this condition is is temporary. But when combined with the east adjacent subdivision, uh, sixty-three, that has sixty, let's see, it has thirty, uh, thirty-three homes in it, I believe, in, when combined, there are sixty-three homes total that will be served from a single access. Uh, we do have code language that limits temporary dead-end streets to fifty lots without a second access. However, the city council does have the ability to waive this limitation, and we've discussed this issue at length with the city council um, as this project has progressed through various different approval phases. Um, if you recall, we went so far as to establish a special committee to research this issue, and we looked at several examples of uh, different subdivisions that have been previously approved with a waiver of that fifty lot limitation. Um, when the existing subdivision to the east Chesterfield Heights was constructed, both Northwest One Hundred and Fourth Court and Northwest Eightieth Avenue were constructed to a wider standard than typical to accommodate an increased traffic load on a single access. And when Northwest Eightieth is extended through this subdivision, it'll be, uh, constructed to that same increased width. Uh, we've also had our fire department review this issue, and they are satisfied with the proposed road widths and the number of lots that are that are accessed from a single access. Uh, with that said, we have received a fair amount of public comment that is opposed to the increased traffic on Northwest One Hundred and Fourth Court. And in response, the developers procured an access easement from the west adjacent property. And that, uh, access easement would be intended to serve, um, traffic associated with subdivision grading and construction of public improvements um, and and try to keep it off that traffic away from Northwest One Hundred and Fourth Court. Um, the council did ask the developer to lengthen the term of that easement to try to encourage traffic from home construction as well to use that easement. And the developer successfully extended the term of the easement to to appear for a period of five years. Uh, we've also received public comment from the north adjacent property owner, Dan Kramer. He's asked that the city council mandate revisions to this plat that would, uh, provide public street right-of-way to to the north adjacent property line so that his property can be accessed. And we did pose the issue our to our consulting engineer who pointed out there's there's limited development potential of that north adjacent property. And there are a number of of engineering challenges to serving those lots. Um, I did provide some exhibits in the staff report, uh, that show Mr. Kramer also owns the west adjacent property, one of the west adjacent properties. And, um, so access through this subdivision, it isn't the only means that that north adjacent property could be accessed. You can access it from the west as well. Um, I do anticipate we have a number of persons who wish to provide comments tonight, so I'm going to keep my comments short. Um, I would, at this time, maybe turn it over to the applicant's representative, Eric Cannon, with Snyder and Associates, so he could add any comments that he might have before we then solicit questions from from, uh, the council and the and the, uh, and the public.
Before we turn it over to the applicant, does any, but do any of the council members have questions for Aaron?
Hey, Aaron, just real quick, um, I don't want to issue, we talked a little bit about in the subcommittee, uh, which I I had served on, was that the fire truck turnaround, and it looks like there is one incorporated into this um, plan. Can you, can you kind of highlight that?
Yeah, sure. If, I don't know, Cindy, are you able to see there, it's on the top of the screen, there's a, uh, where Northwest Eightieth, um, approaches that west property line, which would be, uh, keep moving your hand up there. And then there's, just to the right there, yeah, that's a turnaround, and that's a, uh, a code-required turnaround, um, based on the length of of Northwest Eightieth Avenue. Um, they're required to to install that, um, that turnaround there. Um, that wasn't, that didn't appear on some earlier versions, but, um, these revisions have have, um, have it rightfully placed where where it should be to meet code requirements.
And then, Aaron, you also talked about, kind of in your comments, that the discussion that the subcommittee had about other neighborhoods where we've done similar waivers, and I don't know if you have um, any of those neighbors, neighborhoods that you can pull up, but Northwoods to me is sort of the one that um, that I kind of think about. Um, and that maybe you can, maybe somebody can just pull it up on Google Maps or something.
Yeah, and I didn't include any of those as attachments, um, but yeah, we looked at the Northwood subdivision that was platted in various different, um, phases. I think there were six plating phases in total. And, um, when when Cindy gets it pulled up here on on Google Earth, we'll.
Talk in here and I'll get there.
Running out of things to say. Yeah, I, there's at least, um, sixty-seven lots that are accessed from one access, um, in the Northwood subdivision. We also looked at Orchard Meadows. We talked about, um, you know, what should probably be fresh on your mind, I think, was it maybe just the last council meeting where you looked at, uh, Crosshaven North subdivision? And, uh, there was the one access there off of, uh, Northwest One Hundredth.
And I think on on, and maybe, maybe Dave Wilberding can answer this question, but on the Northwoods development, it was, some of the homes were already built before they extended it beyond the fifty, is that right? So, um, because the original, as I, I think Dave was indicating to me that the original plat at north, so I think this is the south end of Northwoods right there.
I think everything you see there, um, on that south end was installed at one time. And then those individual cul-de-sacs that are further north, say that that Northwest Seventy-Second Place, Northwest Seventy-Second Circle, and there should be maybe two more cul-de-sacs above that. Um, so Northwest Seventy-Third Place and Northwest Seventy-Third Circle, those came in at a later date. Um, but so all of these would have been approved off of one access to, um, they all occurred before that townhome development went in. Cindy, if you could go back down a little bit there. Yes, and now this, um, yeah, that that did provide, when that went in, the townhome development, it did provide a a secondary access back to Seventieth Avenue, but again, if you look at maybe north of, uh, Northwood Drive, everything is choked down to one access at Peckham Street and those, the townhome development is actually private drive, so they're more narrow than a public street.
So if you, obviously, so the people who live on Peckham Street there, um, they, they were, they're sort of similarly situated with the people who now live on on One Hundred and Fourth Court in the sense that that additional roads are being built onto a street that had to access their street, Peckham Street. And we, by giving the waiver, we authorize that. We also had the wider streets as a requirement, so it's a pretty equivalent comparison, fair to say?
I think you're right.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for Aaron? Okay, let's turn it over to the applicant to make comments.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, and Council of Stair Cannon, uh, twenty-seven twenty-seven Southwest Snyder Boulevard here on behalf of Snyder and Associates. And representing Will Van Zee as the developer who is also on the call, um, if you do have any specific questions for them. Appreciate the overview, and I know, um, you guys have taken a lot of time, um, in consideration to this matter. Um, I know this specific project was brought up back on January fourth. I want to, was just a concept plan, um, but really outlined a lot of the same items that that we have here tonight relative to traffic construction access. Um, and the key point of discussion at that meeting, I know, was, um, concerns from the neighborhood for for traffic going through. Um, and and one thing to note here, um, that has not been done in any of those other projects where we was were granted was a secondary access was acquired um, by the developer, um, in a temporary manner from the property to the west for five years. And what this will do is pull that construction traffic off of that roadway, um, and enforce everybody to go to that side. Um, so I think that is a, is a big measure that should be noted here that the developer has gone above and beyond, um, did, did hear the concerns from the neighborhood. Did hear the concerns from the council that, um, there needed to be some effort made, um, and a great, you know, pretty great expense that that has been done, um, to achieve that. Um, and one thing I would like to note here is, you know, when we talk about this as a temporary condition, um, some of the developments in town have some real challenges with the ability to make a future connection, and as you see here to the west of of this blue box, um, that piece of property there does have direct frontage of Seventy-Eighth Avenue. Um, the road that will be extending through Northwest Eightieth will provide the opportunity for that property to the west to have both a street connection, um, as well as sewer and water, um, which will provide, um, real development potential for that open field and that property there. So, and making that connection back to Seventy-Eighth is a very viable option when that next plat comes into the west, and as we've seen the community grow, and you can see everything on this screen here with Hidden Valley to the north and with, uh, Chesterfield Heights Plat One and now Chesterfield Estates Plat Two. Um, in this portion of town, the community does continue to grow to the west. Um, so we do, you know, and don't have a crystal ball, obviously, but um, as as the community continues to grow and the demand in this area continues to be strong, it is very likely that, you know, that property to the west will develop and provide the opportunity for that connectivity and that that second connection out. We do feel the five years is an ample timeline, um, very similar manner to Chesterfield Heights Plat One, um, and Chesterfield Estates Plat Two that we're proposing now. Um, that kind of gives you that natural progression and that growth within the community, so. As, uh, Clayton or as Aaron also mentioned, One Hundred and Fourth and and Hundred and Fourth Court in Northwest Eightieth Avenue are wider streets. They're always planned for this additional traffic and this additional load, so. Um, I know it is concerning to the neighbors to see this additional traffic, but the reality is Northwest Eightieth was always planned to go through. Um, and there would be, uh, traffic on this roadway, so. The one other thing I would note here, um, is that, uh, we are looking, um, to make sure and take all these things into consideration. Um, take that, that sensitivity of the neighborhood, and, um, we hope that that has been something that has been well-received. Um, and and the efforts that have been made here, we've been upfront from the very beginning, talking to this process with the staff, with the council, presenting the concept plan early on, um, as part of the rezoning so that everybody was on board and on, on the same page. Relative to Mr. Kramer's concerns, I I know that, um, he is worried about the ability to get access to the property, but as as Aaron noted, you can see the name on both those parcels there, uh, not only is the nine-point-three acre parcel to the north um, part of his property, but also the twenty-five acre parcel to the west. And as I noted, as the, as the development continues to grow to the west and as his property, the, to the west there is looked at for future development potential, um, he will have the opportunity for access and connectivity, um, as part of that. Um, it is a very challenging piece of property. The comprehensive plan was clear, um, in identifying this area as open space due to the immense woodlands that are there, the steep grades and ravines. Um, so there are some, some extreme challenges to that property when it comes to the development potential, um, which is why we have oriented the property as we have and provided the development, um, for the cul-de-sac. But appreciate everybody's time on this matter. I know it's been a long night, so, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Any questions for, was it Aaron?
Uh, Eric, Mayor.
Eric, okay. Any questions for Eric? Hearing none. Do we have any members of the public for this this evening that would like to address council on this item, and so please indicate uh, your wish to speak in the chat box? Looks like, uh, Joe Sampson would like to speak briefly. Uh, Cindy, can you let him, let him in?
Yes, we also have Joe Huff or Scott Huff, excuse me, uh, Joe Sampson and, um, Dan Kramer.
Okay. I see Joe first, so let's, uh, let's let Joe in. Joe, Joe, are you, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
You bet.
Thank you for, uh, staying on on the call. I know this has been a long night. We appreciate you guys listening to us. I'll, I'll just make two brief comments as we've, we've sort of exhausted this, um, with with the the council and the planning zoning committee. The comments are, I guess, you know, everybody keeps referencing these other developments. Um, I believe Northwoods was one, Crosshaven North. Uh, I would ask one question, were there any public concerns on those other uh, developments when you guys, uh, or when the council exempted the waiver? And that would be my first question, and I guess the second point would be, why have a city code? Uh, you know, if you're not going to enforce it, it just doesn't make any sense whatsoever, uh, to have a code and not enforce it. So, those would be my two comments that, uh, it would be nice if somebody could could answer for us, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Aaron, I don't know if we had any public comments on the prior developments. Would you?
Yeah, Joe had actually asked me this, um, last week, and I looked into it a little bit. Um, I, you know, a couple of those subdivisions that we looked at at the, at the council committee were recent, recently approved, so like with the, with the Crosshaven North. Um, you'll recall, that was just last, last two weeks ago, and and there was no public comment on that. Um, and I had, I had checked back with Clayton as well because he was a staff person who worked on that, and he said he didn't receive any public comment. Um, gosh, there was another one that he was working on. I can't remember the name of that subdivision. It's on the south side of, um, Northwest Seventieth Avenue. Um, it's going to come to me here in a moment. I don't, Clayton, are you still listening? What's the name of that subdivision that's on the south side of Seventy?
Bridgedale Heights.
There you go. Um, that was a similar situation, um, where they would have waived the requirement there, and I asked Clayton, did you receive any public comments? The answer was no. Um, I think Joe had specifically asked me to look into Northwood, and, um, you know, that was a project that goes back over, you know, several development phases and several years. And, um, you know, just, I could look in the file and tell, you know, look and see if I have any public comment in there, but a lot of times that doesn't reflect who might have shown up at the meeting. So I might not, we might not have received public comment, um, ahead of the meeting. But we two do typically note, uh, in the meeting minutes if we've received public comment. And, um, any public that shows up to the meeting would be reflected there, so I gave, I was able to give Joe all of those, um, minutes from each of those meetings, and I only made it through about half of them, and I didn't see mention of public comment, and, um, Joe, were you able to, you you would ask the question, were you able to review those minutes yourself? Joe, were you able to, you, you would ask the question, were you able to review those minutes yourself?
Yeah, I reviewed them, uh, and we didn't see any public comments. So, I mean, we think that our, our concerns are definitely unique to any other references that are being brought up for sure. So.
And I can, you know,
I don't know. Do you, do you guys know how many public comments you've received on this, this matter? I would assume quite a bit.
I included it as an attachment to the staff report. So, um, there is a map. If you, Cindy, if you open up the, the main document, um, the big one, uh, status R underscore C C. And it would be near the end of that document. Um, I, I included a list of all those persons that I received public comment from. Sorry, there's going to be a lot to go through here. Right there. If you go back to the top, yeah, right about one more, maybe. Couple more. Here we go. That's the list of people that I sent a notice to, but then, um, there was another list there. Maybe go up one more page, Cindy. Down to, I'm sorry. Right here. So these are the persons and Joe is not on that list. Yep, that, that's the list of people that I received public comment on and I provided you with an exhibit there. The red dot denotes a person who submitted public comment. Um, I don't think, I didn't have Joe's because his comments came at a different time as everybody else. So I don't think he's listed on this list, but his comments are down below in this, in, um, you know, I included everybody's comments below this. So it looks like we've got a list of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen persons. Um, Joe would be a fifteenth. And of course, Mr. Kramer, who has a different issue, he would be the sixteenth person who commented.
Yeah. And just to interject, I would, I wouldn't, uh, just extend that to the council to, to keep this in consideration that there's this many comments on this matter. Um, versus any other, you know, any other references of, of waivers that you guys have, you know, kind of granted before. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, Scott Huff would like to speak.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is Scott Huff, seventy nine, ten, Northwest One and Fourth Court. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, also, as the councils and yourself, Mayor, would know, I've sent you a letter, uh, also laying out some concerns and also shared concerns of the previous council meeting. Uh, I just want to raise and add to a point from Joe. You know, I, I spent some time on, I hear the, the developer talk about how the, there's some similarities between the previous developments and I heard, the council call talk about that as well. But the research that I've seen, I'd ask, to me, they appear to be the same in that, um, they are not fully developed. They weren't fully developed, um, blocks, so to speak. Uh, this street's fully developed with thirty five homes. The last one's now being built. Uh, so those other ones, what I looked and Googled through the history of the council, uh, were either partially or, or vacant blocks, uh, that were then given waivers. So for me, I asked the council to consider why, why is it this is different or the same, so to speak, to grant a waiver. Also, I'd ask the council, you know, when I look at the purpose, chap, chapter one eighty, the purpose, um, I look at the, in your, uh, chapter talk about preserving, enhancing the development of neighborhoods, um, meeting public safety, health and general welfare. And once again, to double the traffic across the front of one hundred and fourth court, uh, I struggle to understand and ask the council to help me understand how this is preserving and enhancing the development of our neighborhood with this development. I'll also stress that we aren't against this development. And what we've asked is the council to not grant this waiver and to ask the developers put in a permanent access road. Or at some point in time where, uh, begins to exceed the five hundred ADT, uh, a permanent access road. The difference that I see between these previous examples you've shared and this one is this Northwest Eightieth road goes into nowhere. It goes into grimes. It's not controlled by the council here today. The council therefore can't tell me, uh, when this next road can be developed. And I understand and heard from the developer, uh, telling us that, uh, he understands our concerns, but ultimately the developer here, uh, will develop this block and there's no guarantee of when the next road will be built. That will then reduce the traffic below the chapter requirements of five hundred ADT. So I think that's the, the key points that I wanted to make, uh, in association with this.
Thank you, Scott.
The last part, so I have one more point. Apologies. The last part also was that also the developer have said twice or three times now talking about the, um, egress that's been set up. And that cannot be enforced. You cannot, the council cannot, uh, tell me and the developer cannot tell me how they will enforce, uh, people to drive on a gravel road, uh, back onto, uh, seventy, seventy eighth. If you were buying your property, your house, uh, would you drive on that road versus coming up Eightieth and coming on one hundred and fourth court? So it's, it's, it's unenforceable. Um, and I, I think that needs to be seriously considered and I asked the council to, to help me understand how that will, the developer will enforce construction vehicles, uh, for the first thirteen homes as well as the homeowners to drive down that egress. Thank you.
Mayor, this is Eric. If I could just respond to some of those comments.
Sure, sure.
That's appropriate.
You bet, you bet.
I, I guess I would just like to note, you know, when it talks about, um, other projects compared to this one, um, I would note that no other projects ever been asked or required, um, to make a secondary access during construction or any other. Point. Um, so I think this does, and provided that additional, um, opportunity here. As far as the enforcement goes, um, they will put up barricades during construction as far as the subdivision goes to make sure that all the traffic goes through there. Once the public street is open and, and, and done, then yes, it is a public street that does provide that connectivity back through public right of way that is owned by the city. As far as the traffic for the home construction that can be controlled through contractual obligations with those contractors and those home builders to require those um, contractors and subcontractors to use that road. Now again, um, you can't sit out there and enforce everything twenty four hours a day, but at least that will be clearly communicated and contractually obligated by those contractors to be able to do that. Um, so I think that is an effort that is being made there. And the last comment about the property to the west being grimes, that is not grimes. That is part of the Johnston comprehensive plan. Um, so Johnson does control the opportunity for that future development there, not the city of grimes. And given how growth has happened, um, and the opportunity for sanitary sewer and connectivity back to seventy eighth, um, that will become a prime piece of real estate, um, as it is, uh, for future growth.
Thank you. Looks like we have, uh, four more individuals that have already indicated that they would like to speak. So let's, uh, let's move on here. Dan, uh, Dan Kramer?
Yes, Dan Kramer here. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I don't have a lot to add that I haven't stated already. Um, I do agree with Mr. Cannon with Snyder that my property is a very challenging property. Um, like that's the only thing I agree with. I do not agree that there's any viable access from the west piece because of the terrain. Um, there are steep hills, steep ridges. It's not a property that's going to be filled up with cookie cutter lots. But I think several high end timbered lots could be in there if the roads come in from the tops of the ridges, which would be blocked off by the, uh, cul-de-sac at Chesterfield State. So I have secured an engineering firm to help me, uh, put some options together, kind of concepts. I would ask for some time to get that together. Um, we just started on it last week. But, uh, that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Steve O'Onson.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Mayor and, uh, the council, and I appreciate the opportunity to make a few brief comments. Um, I guess first I'd like to say, and I know it's been a long night, I won't do want to repeat anything that Joe and Scott have already stated, but, um, I fully support their comments and their views. I guess the one thing I would like to add and really, uh, dovetail slightly into what Joe, uh, and Scott have touched on as well is when I, this is the second home I've actually purchased in Johnston. Um, and when we moved back, we left the community and we came back in two thousand and seventeen. Um, and we found this development that was new and obviously very appealing, having a young family at the time and still do, is one very important conversation that we had with, with our builder, um, at the time who's built a lot in Johnston, uh, was really around, um, the road around Northwest Eightieth. And really what was going to happen to that, because I'm at eight thousand one Northwest one hundred and fourth court. So that road comes right um, into my house. So I knew the expectation that the road was in, that it would be developed. Um, so that conversation we had was really what are the requirements, um, from a city perspective? Um, and it was made very, very clear that the code requires there to be a second outlet depending on the number of homes um, that we're obviously discussing tonight. And based on that feedback, that was a, a critical part of my decision to purchase this home, knowing I could move forward with confidence, there would be a second outlet. Um, so I relied on that, um, code and obviously today by waiving that is obviously something very different than we had anticipated. So, um, again, I think you put code in for a reason. Um, I made a purchase decision. It was one of the decision, wasn't the only one. Uh, but it was one that was important in my decision to purchase this home. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Steve. Mike Herman.
Yeah, thank you. I just, uh, had, uh, just a couple of real quick ones. Uh, I think that the guys have done a great job of kind of illustrating the points tonight. Uh, the only couple of things I just wanted to make sure were, were of note, uh, was that my wife and myself had actually sent an email into the city as well. I noticed our name was excluded from that list. Uh, when, when that was gone through prior, uh, but two, is there any sort of threshold essentially for uh, this, this waiver? I know in this particular case, this is exceeding the threshold by over twenty percent. Uh, I don't know if the, when the council evaluates these, if it's done on a case by case basis, but is, is there a threshold that's evaluated to say, okay, this is really above and beyond what's normal. And I think, you know, any, any person in their right mind knows that, uh, the path of least resistance is the way to get to the property, uh, you're going to and, and, and not many are going to choose the, uh, the right of way or the easement that's been granted on the west side of the property to get to this. So, I think, you know, it's, it's definitely going to put a lot of stress on this existing neighborhood. Uh, the trap, from a traffic flow standpoint, uh, definitely trust the, the builder and, and the quality of homes that they put in. Uh, that's never been a, a point of contention. I just, I think it's, it really comes down to, uh, having, uh, the second point of egress put in place, uh, on a, you know, on a permanent basis. And I'm sure that, that affects the profitability of the development, but it is, uh, generally what's required by the city from what we understand.
Thank you, Mike. And we have Brody Wells.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, obviously the guys have hit on, on most of the comments, just a couple of things to reiterate. Um, I mean, as far as the temporary access that, uh, both Aaron and Eric has mentioned to the west, I guess my comment there would be, um, yeah, they're asking us to wait for that to come in and then we, we'd have another outlet, but why not wait for the developers to develop until that is there? Um, if they're so confident that it's going to be there eventually, then they might as well just wait. We uphold the ordinance and keep the rules the way they should be. Um, and they can, they can wait for the temporary access. As far as the easement, Scott mentioned it and I had the same comments, um, there really is no way to enforce that. I understand Eric mentioned put up a barricade in the short term, um, but long term you can't, you can't, um, enforce that. And, and I don't think anybody's really going to use that. It's similar to putting up a twenty five mile an hour speed limit sign and tell me that everybody's going to drive twenty five miles an hour. So, I, I just think that that's, that the easement to me is a little bit of smoke and mirrors just to try and get this, um, ordinance waived. Um, you know, uh, from a personal standpoint, I live right across the street from Steve. So I have the same kind of experience he did. And when I bought this lot, um, you know, I met with the developer and I was very concerned about, uh, Eightieth going, going through, because I live around the corner of Eightieth, which would be the only access to this new plat. Um, the developer told me not to worry about it because there was an ordinance in place that required, uh, you know, in order to develop that plat, the next plat and to build so many homes that there would have to be another outlet. So, I have a little bit of a, maybe a personal integrity issue with the fact that the developer used the ordinance as a selling tool, um, to get me and obviously Steve and probably others to buy. And now they're trying to get it waived. Um, so just more of a personal thing, but I guess in the end, um, a couple of people have mentioned it, but I, I, I would just like to get an understanding if it's approved. I think we all deserve to really understand why it's approved, um, why we're not, the, the, we decide not to uphold the, the ordinances and the, and the laws that are, that are put in front of us. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to, uh, share your comments with the council? I'm not seeing it. Okay, thank you, Cindy. I'm not seeing any either. So.
I think I do, um, if you would allow me to, uh, Madam Mayor, maybe to address a couple of those comments. This is Aaron Wolf again. Um, specifically, um, talk about how to enforce that easement agreement. And, um, I'm actually asking you to consider two resolutions tonight. Resolution twenty one thirty is a development agreement and it addresses specifically that, that access easement. And I'll read you some of the language from, from the easement or from that development agreement. It's stated in the development agreement that the city council would accept a single access serving up to sixty three lots, provided the applicant construct a barricade at the existing termination of Northwest Eightieth Avenue and mandate all traffic as so decided with the construction of public improvements for the plat be restricted to that temporary ingress, egress, access easement on the west adjacent property. So that first paragraph stipulates that they should construct a barrier and direct all construction traffic for the public improvements to use that easement. When the city accepts the public improvements for Chesterfield Estates Plateau, that barricade can be removed and persons who, um, homeowners who purchase homes there could go ahead and use Northwest Eightieth Avenue back to one hundred and fourth, uh, provided all construction vehicle access related to home construction be encouraged to utilize the aforementioned temporary access easement for a period of up to five years. So, you know, you know, and how do we, you know, how do we force the construction traffic to use that easement? Well, as you know, Eric had stated, will intends to, um, sign contracts with the, um, with the, the home buyers or with the construction companies that they would utilize that temporary ingress, egress access. So that, that was the attempt to, um, you know, put some teeth into that, um, ingress, egress, access easement there. And with regard to the code requirement, um, you know, there, there is specifically written into the code requirement a provision for council waiver. Um, so you, you know, you do have that ability to waive it. Um, of course, we consider these on a case by case basis. Um, there is no threshold where we have said, you know, it's exceeded a certain amount. We won't go above ten percent or we won't go above twenty percent. So it's really just kind of considered on a case by case basis. And in this instance, it was the recommendation of the council that, that will pursue this easement on the adjacent property and, and try to lengthen the term of that easement for up to five years. Um, you know, so that you would be more comfortable with, um, the single access.
Is that it, Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, council, um, questions or comments for Aaron or the applicant or just generally?
Uh, this is Councilman Kopa. I'll make some, some comments. You know, I, I think we've had, had, had a good discussion again here tonight. Obviously, the residents in that area feel really strongly about it and they're very well educated. They've given a lot of thought to it. You know, uh, some, some questions that were asked, you know, Mr. Sampson, I think talked about why have a code if we're going to grant a waiver? And I think one of the reasons we have this code requirement is it, is it then if somebody wants to exceed the fifty, uh, homes and have a wait, seek a waiver, then, then we are able to then require the wider streets. So you have the wider street on, I think it's seventy eighth or eighty, I think it's seventy eighth, that's, that's twenty nine feet as opposed to twenty six feet as well as Eightieth Court is twenty nine feet as well. And so that, it, the waiver requ, uh, request area, uh, process gives us as leverage from the city to require the developer to build a wider street to accommodate that. So that's, I think that's from my standpoint, a reason why we have this process in place. Um, you know, as, as far as the, you know, some comments made by some of the folks about this gravel road and would we expect actual, the homeowners to access the gravel road? I don't, we don't have any, I, I certainly don't have any anticipation that any, but any homeowner would access the gravel road. That's not part of my thought process. And it, and then the question by Mr. Herman about the fact that there's sixty one lots here that would be served by the street and how much of that is over fifty as compared to some of the others that are waiver? Um, you know, it is, um, you know, sixty one is actually not that much over the fifty compared to some of the other ones that we've considered. In fact, we had one at their last council meeting that would be a hundred and twenty lots served by a single access point. So, um, it's, it's this, this one is not. So it's, it's this, this one is not all that unique. Obviously, you know, the folks here who spoke tonight sort of feel like because there's opposition to this, that we should vote it down. And I just have never, I've been on the council for 10 years. And I, and I've never approached an issue that based, where I make my decision based on is there opposition or not? I try to make the decision based on the facts are in front of me. I certainly understand if there's opposition, but I, but just because there's opposition to an idea doesn't mean that I'm going to support or oppose it. I'm, I'm comfortable supporting this development in this case because I do believe the developer has taken a couple of steps. One, he's, he's, he's built the wider streets, which before there was even the, you know, the second development came along. So he incurred that cost plus his willingness to have this easement. The temporary access easement, well, that's an additional cost that he'll have that will keep the construction traffic off of the road by having the barricade in place. And so I'm, I'm prepared to support it. I realize that that's not a popular decision and, but, but I think it's the right decision and therefore that's why I've come to that decision.
Other council comments?
I would, Mayor, I would just say that I would agree with Councilman Cope and, and his assessment. It's not, it's not always a popular thing which we do here. But I think we've heard the case made. And I think the developer has done quite a bit to help us with the traffic challenges. And so I'm going to be supportive of this also.
Other, other comments?
I'm just, been any discussions with the landowner to the west, south of the Kramer property? Is, is there any discussions on developing that or is it tied up in a, no, we're never going to develop it or?
I'm not aware of any discussions with that property owner. I don't know if David has had any discussions with anybody. Perhaps the developer might have, might have some knowledge of that.
This is Clayton Under. Adam Plaguey and I have tried to make contact with that owner several times to no success. So to my knowledge, there's been no indication that it's going to be developed, but I've also have no indication that it will never be developed. I've heard nothing. Maybe the developer knows something different.
Counsel, this is Eric Cannon with Snyder. I know the developer has obviously been in contact with the property owner because they were able to secure the easement there. I believe there is a price on it is, is rather high. But I can't speak to any specific, you know, conversations as far as when it would develop. I know there is likely opportunity for it based on obviously timing, value and the ability to make it a successful project.
Eric, this is Adam Plaguey. If you do have that contact information for the adjoining property owner, appreciate if you do send it over to a staff member so that we can also reach out.
Yeah, definitely. We can pass it along.
Does the council have any other comments? Let me just say, this is one of these times when, you know, we have, we're, we have to make a decision and we, in making the decision, we're not making anybody happy, probably. We probably are not making the homeowners completely happy because there's not a permanent second, secondary access to this property. We also haven't made the developer happy in this process because we've insisted on, on a temporary access for the longest period of time possible in, in order to provide for this construction. So, you know, as Councilman Cope and Councilwoman Martin have already indicated, you know, this, this is, you know, this is not, this is not an easy decision. But I, I don't, I don't know exactly where the vote is going to go. But my, my guess is that, well, I, we need to, we need to, we need to take the vote, we need a motion. But, you know, it's, it's, it's one where it's, it's a difficult decision. But I, I think in the end, whichever way it goes, it'll, it'll be the right decision because it's the decision that the council is making based on the, you know, the arguments before us. And we've had some really good discussions tonight. So it has been, it has been thoroughly vetted. If, if I had a vote, I would vote in support of it because I think, again, I think it's, you know, it's one of the growing pains of our community. You know, nothing is, nothing is, nothing is going to be perfect as we continue to grow. But we, you know, we have to, you know, make the best decisions that we can in order to, to move, move these, move these issues forward. So again, we probably aren't going to make anybody happy in this process. But we have to make a decision based on the best information we have available to us, so.
Maybe can I make one more quick interjection? I'm asking you to approve two different resolutions tonight. Of course, 2130 is the development agreement I just talked about. 2131 approves the preliminary plat for Chesterfield Estates Platteau. And the way I've got it written there under item D is erroneous. It says Chesterfield, Chesterfield Estates Plat 1. So it's would more appropriately be Chesterfield Estates Plat 2. It also says preliminary and final plat. It's just the preliminary plat. The resolution that's in the packet is worded appropriately.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion, counsel? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution 21 dash 30.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion, counsel? If not, Cindy, vote please. Cindy?
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21 dash 31? And again, the title, the, the description is not correct in the agenda, but it is on the resolution itself. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move. Second, Cope.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. And again, I want to just thank everyone that was, has contributed, written comments up to this point, as well as your, your oral comments this evening. It was very helpful in the discussion and decision making. So thank you very much. Moving on to item 8E, consider change orders number 24, 26, 27, 30, 31, 32, 37, and 38 with Hanson JTC LLC for the Johnston Town Center project.
Good evening, Mayor and the council. This is Dave Warding. Just got about an hour presentation. I'm just kidding.
I mean, you better, you better order breakfast for it.
We need a little levity at this hour. We are, we do have a batch of change orders here that we've been working with Hanson on. You'll notice they're not all in order. That's because we're still working through some of the other ones that they have submitted to make sure that they're correct and in line. I don't need to go through all of these individually unless the council would like me to. But I'll just highlight, this is addressing a number of things the council has largely talked about in the past. Electric service to the monument sign, for example. Getting the site ready for the up down sculpture with base and lighting. Some adjustments to grading for the pump track. One of the items we haven't talked about as we've gotten into the building, a desire to have a different sort of panic and lock, building lockdown functions. And so there's $2,800 set aside for that. Trailhead signage just is exceeding the, the allowance that was provided. We are suggesting an extended warranty and some monitoring software for the generator. That's, didn't initially do the monitoring software and as, as we've been operating that, it runs weekly as a test. We've realized that we had, weren't aware when it was the time, the clock was off and it wasn't running when it was supposed to. And it was running when we didn't think it was. So this will help us adjust and keep track of that. And then there were some additional costs for Juice Box to do the, the redesign of the logo and the, and the decorative metal fencing at the site's port building. So that's a very, very quick overview. In total, these are about $27,000. That leaves us our contingency balance of just over 1.5 million dollars. And as a reminder, any money left in that owner contingency at the end of the project will come off the total cost of the project. So we're continuing to also bring this project in under budget. Although I will say there are some little bit larger change orders pending. We're just still reviewing those.
Councilmember, for Dave?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 8F, consider approval of claims in the amount of 660, 266,082 dollars and 99 cents.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion approved. Moving on to city administrator staff comments. And I'll just ask you, Jim, do you really want to do the budget discussion tonight?
Yes, we have to.
Oh. Okay, Teresa.
We'll, we'll be setting the public hearing at the next meeting, so I guess that's up to you.
Be succinct.
My memo is very succinct.
Okay, take it away.
And I apologize for speaking for Jim. I didn't give him a chance there, did I? But I, I put a memo in your packet and I did go over this memo with the finance committee on Friday. And again, there, the memo is very direct, very succinct. We do have a budget to present with the exact same tax levy as last year. So no increase. $10.63 as would be our levy rate. It does take our general operating revenue balance reserve down to 24%. But our overall general, our general government reserve would remain at 30%. Includes funding from our local option sales and service tax fund. Several things. For one thing, we do use, and Cindy, I don't know if you can scroll back to my, the last attachment, actually. The thing we told the voters when we passed the local option sales and service tax was that we would be using, right there. We'd be using the local option sales tax to buy down the property tax rate. A minimum, we said a minimum of 50 cents and we really brought it down by a dollar. And basically this is a reconciliation of the local option sales tax fund. Tells you what money we've, we brought in the first six months it was in place. Tells you how much we're actually using 97% of our budgeted estimate in the fiscal year that we anticipated getting money. So FY '21, that's what we use to buy down our debt service levy rate to under $3, about $2.34. And we've been well over $3 for quite some time. This reconciliation is projected out into future years. You'll see, I don't really anticipate an increase in local option sales tax. I, I assume that will change. We are so new into this. And then COVID hit. And then we received, our estimate was much less than we anticipated it to be. We thought we were going to be getting 3 million. And then we received even yet another reestimation because they had some other people with population numbers that changed everything. So this is pretty conservative estimate. Hopefully this will change over the next year or two as we march forward here with the local, local option sales tax. I'll bring this back to you every year. But one of the things that was discussed during our budget work sessions was funding an additional police officer, an additional civilian position within the police department. The funding of three fire lieutenants. And then the funding of the Emerald Ash tree removal program. And so on that reconciliation page, that was just up there. Oh, she moved it already. You'll see where I have decreased that under transfers out. We've decreased for the police officer, the fire department, EAB. But the finance committee discussed is that additionally, we will be recommending that we use cash from the local option sales tax fund to fund our portion of the trestle to trestle project payment to Polk County for a couple of reasons. First of all, then we won't have to issue debt and pay interest on it for two purposes. First of all, it's not our asset. It's hard for me to pay interest on an asset that we don't even get to keep or appreciate. And with using cash for this capital project and I'm going to say deferring, that might be the wrong word to use for your, you guys. But we're going to be able to start later a couple of projects that were in the FY '22 CIP based on a couple of issues. We're going to be able to borrow about $2 million less than we had anticipated, which is just going to help our debt service levy even more when we talked about being at 98% of our debt capacity and all of those things. And I went into great lengths talking about that with the finance committee and I don't need to do that today. But anyway, the committee agreed with all of this information and, and will be making that recommendation as part of the budget. Now you can go back to the memo, Cindy. Thank you. Then the, the other point that was put in, so, so I guess what I was saying is that the positions that you reached a consensus for and wanted to fund, we will be able to fund and we will be using some local option sales tax money to fund those as was allowed by our ballot language for public safety and parks activities. The second bullet item, met with Matt Greiner and Scott Cherry. And we looked closely at the wage distribution split amongst the employees at the public works department. And we're going to reallocate a percentage of two, two of the administrative employees in public works. So we were able to reallocate some of the road use tax money, some of the general fund money to road use tax money. And additionally, reallocate some of the vehicle operating supply money from the original budget. We're doing that by more promptly billing each department correctly for the fuel purchases that they make for their department, which we do it. We'll just have to make sure that that the department gets that information up here to Brett. And we get that done, take, get that taken care of correctly. But that freed up some money in the general fund to allow for the GIS web mapping enhancement decision package that the council wanted to support. And additionally, the contribution to the project development fund. After our last work session, Adam did text me or email me and said, go ahead and drop. Adam did text me or email me and said, go ahead and drop that twenty five thousand down to about fifteen thousand this first year. To get us started in that project development. And, and then we'll see how that goes. Again, once he gets a project started and we know what TIF area it might fall into, then I'll be able to pay that back. So that's how we're able to fund those items that are on the decision package page that we'll look at here in a, in a couple of minutes. Consensus regarding that department, decision package page. Cindy, if you want to scroll to that, to that decision package page. Right there. This is where, if you look at the packet that I sent you, in the one column, I've typed in where we would be funding it. So like LOSST, local option sales and service tax. Or CARES Act funding paid for something. CEP, we had that large. Format printer was really, we already had that. So it really should have been a CIP project, but. And then TIF revenue. And then there's a couple of items that we're going to. Say they should find in their current budget. As an example, the video and camera equipment. I'm hoping that that seventy five hundred dollars that as we get towards April at the end of this year. The communications department for the city does videos and pictures for all departments within the city. And so maybe amongst all of us in the department, we all have some little bit of budget left that we can help pay for those. So the one program that, that is not addressed in the budget nor is addressed policy wise. Is that feral cat program and you guys will continue to discuss that here into the future. So the first attachment that was with your memo was the general fund balance attachment. Then this was your decision package attachment. Then I provided the document that tells you if. If you have a hundred thousand dollar house in Johnston, your property tax rate, your property taxes, although the rate remains the same. Because rollback changed a little bit, your property tax rate is going to go up. Fourteen dollars and nineteen cents for the year. That's a year. So just a little over a dollar a month. If you're a commercial business, which was the next attachment, there would be absolutely no change because that rollback didn't change at all. Then the next document is the. New. This will be the second year we've had to publish this notice of maximum property tax. Hearing. That's what they used to call it. Looks like they have changed the heading a little bit. This is the one last year. If anything's over, if it's over two percent, there has to be a super majority. To approve this hearing and the resolution that goes with it. And our valuation growth was three point two eight. This lev, our levy changes three point five five. So. We're basically capturing the little bit of valuation growth that we had. And we're using that to pay for the additional police officer. The police civilian position, the fire lieutenants. Benefits, risk management and programs, things like that that we had. That we are going to need to pay for to help cover these operating expenses. I did send out. Towards the end of last week. To the finance committee, just a quick chart of what it looks like the, the metro is doing regarding this percentage. Because there's always a discussion about where is this percentage going to look like when it's in the paper. And we're the third or fourth lowest in the metro. I will say it does look like though, when you look through the charts, that. It's almost like the growth of the city is what's driving everybody's percentage. So. Like Ankeny that had almost a seven percent growth of their, their numbers up about six percent or something like that. So I think that's what they're going to find for most of these hearings. Where that will be. So then the last page was that those reconciliations, I had it both ways. With or without. Trestle to trestle or not. So the next step, as long as the council is supportive. And I, I basically. Got from the consensus that I got from the council last week or two weeks ago. What I thought were my marching orders to come up with the budget that we came up with. At the next council meeting, we will set the hearing for the max levy resolution. For the, and that hearing and resolution would be at the first meeting in March. After you hold that, then on the agenda, you would set the hearing for the regular budget, which has to be at the second meeting in March. So that it's done and is able to be filed with the county and the state. Any questions?
Any questions for Teresa?
I don't have any questions, but I, I think it looks like a great, great budget and it's consistent with what we talked about a couple of weeks ago. I'm really excited about the fact we're able to keep that levy rate the same. I got a statement from my property taxes. And the, the, if you go back to, this was actually a couple of years ago, but the levy rate. The combined levy, so ours is ten sixty three, but yet in the schools, et cetera, was forty one dollars and sixty eight cents. And last year, because of our dollar reduction, it's now down to thirty nine dollars and ninety four cents. So that dollar seventy drop in the levy. That, that at our home, we actually, our property tax, our valuation went up a little bit. But the actual property taxes we're paying this year is less than it was the year before. So I think that's, you know, that's, you know, that's, it's not very often that that can happen. And obviously the local option sales tax is a major player in that. But it goes a very significant accomplishment in us keeping the levy rate the same this year will, will reinforce that. So that, I think those are really positive developments.
Any other comments, questions? Well, I think Councilman Cope, in addition to keeping the property tax levy, even, you know, we've got a budget here that we can be very proud of. I mean, it, it puts, you know, it puts some additional money in areas that have always been a priority of ours, particularly in the public safety area. And it also includes a lot of incredible projects that, you know, that we've been, that we've been working on and are all excited about seeing. Continue to develop. So this is, I, I want to thank the staff for their hard work on this. You know, they brought us a, a good budget to begin with and we sent them back and told them to tweak it just a little bit, improve it a little bit more and make it perfect. And, and I think they have. So. Good work, good work by the council, good work by the staff. This is, this is a very good budget. Other comments? If not, Teresa, you got what you need?
I did. Thank you.
Go forth and do good things. Okay. We are still under city council or city administrator staff comments. Jim, anything else?
Yes, just two more things. First of all.
Come on, Jim. That was a rhetorical question.
These are short. I want to thank Teresa for her work on the budget. She, she did take the marching orders we got and did a great job. Where we needed to be. Just want to remind the council, our next council meeting is going to be on a Tuesday. It's going to be on Tuesday, February sixteenth. Because City Hall is closed for the President's Day holiday on the fifteenth. So that'll be a, a next meeting will be Tuesday in two weeks. And then Matt Greiner just has one quick things he wants to share with the council. Are you still with us, Matt?
I am still with you. Let the council know that our Northwest Seventieth Avenue Phase Three project won an award with the Iowa Concrete. Association. So unfortunately, they're not able to, they're not, they've canceled their annual get together. Conference this year due to COVID nineteen, but we're receiving that in the mail and there will be some. Coming information put out about that. I think they were going to post it on their website by the, by today. We'll have some information coming out shortly about that as well.
Great. Congratulations.
Yes, our staff and engineers and the councils will work really hard to, on our public works projects. And it's great when somebody takes notice and gives you some recognition for that. So we're excited. We'll share the award with the council and we will receive it. So. Unless there's anything else from other department heads, I think that's all we have this evening.
Okay. Councilmembers, Councilman Cope?
I'm, I wanted to kind of pass along a thought. You know, we've been doing the strategic planning process and reviewing the community survey. And we've got the budget and all three of those items are kind of really compressed. And so I'd like to encourage Jim and Janet and me, the folks to kind of help drive all those three of those. Obviously, the budget we do every year and I know the survey and the strategic planning, we, I think we do every other year. But I would like to, to kind of have a, as we approach the next cycle that we come around and plan to do those, a little bit more of a plan approach. So maybe we do the community survey in, in May or June or sometimes that we have an opportunity to get their survey results. And then we do the strategic planning process, maybe in September or sometimes what's not so close to the budget. And so I would just, I would like the staff to give some thought to putting a plan together for how you kind of build those together. Because then I think we would be able to use the, the results of the survey much better to help us in our strategic planning process. Use what we learned from the strategic planning process to help put the budget together. And so that's just a thought I'd like to kind of share. Second of all, my teenage son has already gone to bed, so this meeting has lasted way too long.
Well, I hope he fed himself.
Oh, he's very good at that. He's very good at that.
Very good. Councilwoman Martin?
I don't have anything.
Councilman ready?
I, I don't know anything either.
Councilman Evans?
I have about four things. No, I have nothing.
And they're very, very brief. Well, I have nothing to add this evening either. This has been a long night, but it's been a, a good night, good discussions, good decisions. So. Thanks, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Bye.
Let's see. We are adjourned. Thank you.